Welcome to this public hearing of the municipality of the county of Kings. It is Thursday, January 11th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. My name is Deputy Mayor Emily Lutz. I am filling in for Mayor Matart while he's off on a medical leave. And he may be joining us online tonight, but we have, no, he's not here yet. So we will excuse his absence when it comes to council. But I will note that any councillor not present at a public hearing is unable to vote at the matters at hand when the issue comes to council. So should Mayor Matart join us halfway through, we will decide which, how much he's heard, essentially, and he may be able to vote on some of the items. But barring that, he will be unable to vote on any items. At this point, I'll just, we'll take a brief roll call so we can register our attendance as council. And I'd like to welcome you all here this evening. We like when there's folks joining us in this democratic process. So it's nice that you're here with us and thank you for being here. And thanks to those of you who are online as well. So nine councillors are present and Mayor Matart is absent. At this point, I will turn the floor over to Katie Allman, who's going to present on our first item, Application to amend the Grand Prairie Conservation District map. And she'll lead us through the presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So as the Deputy Mayor stated, this is a public hearing for the Grand Prairie Heritage Conservation District to amend the boundary. The subject property is 2176 Grand Prairie Road, PID 55231468 in Grand Prairie. So the property was recently purchased by new owners and they have applied to have the property removed from the Heritage Conservation District. The subject property, the home that is on it, is less than 30 years old. And with it being within the Heritage Conservation District, it does limit their ability to renovate the property. So each time an exterior renovation is done within the Heritage Conservation District, a certificate of appropriateness is required. And this can cause significant delays to projects and require a lot more costly materials. So this can cause financial hardships and discourage property owners from completing necessary repairs to their properties. So because the property or the house is less than 30 years old, the property owners have requested to remove it from the Heritage Conservation District. The subject property is the red box along Grand Prairie Road. And this is the approximate location. The subject property is within the historic hamlet of Grand Prairie zoning. So just some information with the Heritage Conservation District Plan and Bylaw. It was adopted in 1999 in accordance with the Heritage Property Act and Heritage Conservation District Regulations. It was done via voluntary opt-in method, so property owners had to sign a declaration to state that they wanted to be included within the Heritage Conservation District. The purpose of this was to, the protection of historic buildings, the scenic character and the historic character of the area. It also encourages new development within the Heritage Conservation District to be architecturally compatible. The reality on the ground is a little bit different. There are some historic properties and homes that are not located within the Heritage Conservation District and some newer homes that are not architecturally compatible with the criteria contained in the Heritage Conservation District are actually included within the district. So this results in a disjointed and not cohesive Heritage Conservation District boundary. So this map shows you, so the yellow, the yellow squares indicate modern buildings and the red indicates all the historic buildings within Grand Prairie. If we look at this map, so anything within gray there that is a black box is a historic building within a Heritage Conservation District. The black boxes that are outside the gray, those are all the heritage houses and or buildings that are not included within the Heritage Conservation District. So you can see that it is a very disjointed boundary and there are a lot of properties that have historical value to the community that are actually excluded. So these are several of the historic home types found in Grand Prairie. And this is the subject property. This is the applicant's house, which is a contemporary design, and it is only about 27 years old. So the enabling policy under the Conservation Plan 4.6, it shall be the intention of council to consider reductions of the boundary of the Heritage Conservation District by withdrawal of specific properties or portions of properties from the district upon application by the owners of such properties for an amendment to the Grand Prairie Conservation District map. Council shall have regard to the following criteria. A, the stated reason for the proposed boundary amendment. The extent to which continued inclusion of the property within the Heritage Conservation District places an undue hardship on the property owner. The architectural character, landscape and historical association of the property in terms of its value as part of the Heritage Conservation District. The extent to which the boundary amendment will reduce the cohesiveness of the district or diminish the effectiveness of the conservation plan or bylaw. And any alternatives to the boundary amendment which may be available. So as I stated, this could put undue hardship on the owners if they are required to keep with the Heritage Conservation District to modify their 27-year-old home. And in terms of architectural character, the, the home itself has no architectural character. And there isn't right now a cohesive Heritage Conservation District boundary. So staff's opinion is the removal of this one property will not impact the cohesiveness of the Heritage Conservation District. And then any alternatives to the boundary amendment, the only other alternative would be to not allow it at this point. So this is the proposed, this would be the proposed amendment. So the amendments would be to the Grand Prairie Conservation District Plan and Bylaw. So that is the subject property. So the map amendment would remove that property. This would be map six from the Grand Prairie Conservation District Plan. And then this would be the Grand Prairie Conservation District bylaw change. So for the Heritage Conservation District Boundary Amendment process, as I stated, it was a voluntary opt-in process and new homeowners should have the same choice if their property doesn't have historical character. Homeowners within 500 feet were notified about the application and public hearing. We received no written submissions, phone or phone calls on this application. All statutory requirements have been met. So right now, we are at the public hearing. This process is a little bit different from a normal planning process where after public hearing, it gets second reading from council and should council vote in favor of this, a package is then created and sent to the minister. And the minister actually has the final approval if this change is to be made or not. And the minister's decision is final as this is not appealable. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Katie. At this point, I would remind council that we are here as a quasi judicial body and no debate shall be made on the topic at hand until we enter into a special council meeting immediately after this meeting. So just a reminder that any comment, well, any, there should no be, be no comments at this time, it should just be questions essentially. So please reserve any questions for now. And if there are none, then I'll look to the public for any comment that you may have. You're allowed to ask questions and comment, but we are just here to listen and clarify. So are there any comments from the public? You're invited to the microphone. Please state your name and address. And if there aren't, that is also okay. Thank you, Laura. Okay. I believe then that we can move on to the next item for public hearing. Thank you, Katie. So next we have the, oh, you're, you're still on deck. So next we have the Application to rezone a portion of properties in Greenwood from the rural mixed-use A2 zone to the rural industrial M3 zone. So you have the floor, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this is a land use bylaw map amendment or rezoning application for 1291 Highway 201, PID 55448005 and a portion of the adjacent parcel, PID 55517080 in Greenwood. This is an application to rezone a portion of the properties from the rural mixed-use A2 zone to the rural industrial M3 zone to permit aggregated related industries, building and construction contractors' uses and self-storage facility uses. The subject property has been in the ownership of the Balby family for generations. A development agreement for this subject property was approved by council on June 1st, 2004 and registered June 25th, 2004. The development agreement enabled the development of the property as an abattoir and meatpacking plant. Council voted to discharge the development agreement at a meeting in December 2023. Glenn Balby, on behalf of the K RJ Property Holdings, has applied to rezone this to permit the reuse of existing buildings as office space for his local excavating and paving company, as well as the development of an asphalt plant in association with the business should he be able to get the proper provincial licensing and necessary permits in place for that. He would also like an area for outdoor self-storage facilities. So 2.2.2 establishes and enables the following rural zones common to the agricultural and resource designations in the land use bylaw. So the rural industrial M3 lands are zoned to include existing industrial businesses and areas intended to contain industrial businesses that require large tracts of rural land. Industries that support agricultural and resource uses, including but not limited to agricultural processing and sawmills and industrial uses that need to be well separated from residential, residential uses. So the purpose of this zone was to provide, develop, sorry, was to provide for industrial areas that need to be well separated from residential areas. And this, this zoning was not applied broadly when council adopted the last set of zoning bylaws. The thought behind this was rural industrial would be kind of zoned as needed. So this is the best option for this application as it permits the various uses that the applicant would like to be able to utilize on his property. So this is the approximate location along Highway 201 in Greenwood. And this is the subject property. So this red outline shows both parcels and the area that is being proposed to be rezoned. So the subject property is 30.21 acres in size and has 183 feet of road frontage along Highway 201. Access shall be provided from this property, so right where it goes down to Highway 201, this long panhandle area. And the abutting vacant parcel has a lot area of 8.8 acres. Both properties benefit, benefit from municipal water services. There is an existing commercial access on the vacant parcel, however, it has since been barricaded and is not proposed to be used. The subject properties, as well as the surrounding properties, are located within the rural mixed-use A2 zone and the agricultural designation. Combined, the subject property's total 39 acres and the proposed area to be rezoned is 17.37 acres. So the property is located over 2,800 feet from the closest PMQ. The property is located 1,000 feet from the growth center. The closest residential dwelling is over 1,700 feet away from the proposed asphalt plant. And as I stated before, the applicants will have to go through provincial licensing and permitting as the province is responsible for environmental and water concerns and also regulating aggregate-related resources or businesses. So this is the zoning map. So this shows that it is within the rural mixed-use zone. And as you can see, to the west, there is mixed commercial residential, comprehensive neighborhood development and also residential one and two units. It is within the agricultural designation. And so mapping indicates that there is a small water course through the property, which is where this little star is. So this photo is approximately where the star on this map is. And that was a drainage ditch that the property owners created and maintain. So these are site photos. So the first photo shows the existing buildings on site. The second photo shows where the proposed asphalt plant location would be. And then the third photo, you can kind of see the buildings in the distance. Those are the buildings from the first photo. This is taken from where the asphalt plant is proposed to be, looking towards Highway 201, to show how far back it is. So a site visit was conducted in February 2022 by a previous planner that was assigned the file. And then again on October 3rd by the planner who overtook the file and the manager of planning. There are four existing storage buildings located on the subject properties that were formerly used in the abattoir and butchering operation. The proposed asphalt plant is intended to be developed in the rear portion of the lot. This portion of the subject property is unmaintained, densely treed and vegetated. They just have the center of it cleared. So for policy review, 2.2.12, consider proposals to rezone lands within the agricultural designation, except lands within the agricultural zone or the resource designation from any other zone to the rural industrial zone. In evaluating such proposals, council shall be satisfied that the proposal will not negatively impact nearby agricultural operations or contribute to undue conflict with rural residents. So the proposed asphalt plant will not be in close proximity to the neighboring residents and will not be visible from the road. The existing buildings are set back a minimum of 700 feet from the road and the proposed asphalt plant is proposed to be located at the rear portion of the site in a location that is approximately 1,640 feet from the road. This is proposed to be developed at the rear of the property and it has a vegetative buffer. The closest dwelling is 1,200 feet and this dwelling is in the ownership of the applicants. A separation distance of roughly 1,600 feet is provided between the asphalt plant and the closest dwelling in an unrelated ownership and approximately 685 feet between the zone boundary and the dwelling. The subject property already has industrial vehicles using the access and being stored on the property and the applicants do not believe the traffic, the traffic in and out of the property will increase. The self-storage facility is proposed to be located in the northwest portion of the area to be rezoned between the existing use and the area proposed for the asphalt plant development. So B, limits the rezoning area to the size reasonably required to accommodate the proposal, including any proposed phasing. So the subject properties are 39 acres and the proposed area of rezoning is 17.37 acres. This encompasses the access and areas leading to the buildings, which are located over 700 feet from the road and the area to accommodate the proposed asphalt plant site. Due to the irregular shape of both the subject properties as well as the area to be rezoned, the size is reasonable for the proposal as it will provide a reasonable area to accommodate the current plans for the business and enable some degree of flexibility for growing. For C and D, meets any additional rezoning criteria in the designation applicable to the law and meets the general criteria for amending the land use bylaw. So the general criteria for amending the land use bylaw will be reviewed in a few slides. And policy 3.4.23 provides, provides specific rezoning criteria within the agricultural designation. So 3.4.23, consider rezoning from agricultural A2 to the rural industrial M3 or rural commercial C4. In considering such amendments, council shall be satisfied that A, the application only applies to land that has not been in recent agricultural production as determined through a review of diverse information sources, including but not limited to the Schedule F 2012 Land Cover Map, aerial photography, assessment information. F 2012 Land Cover Map, aerial photography, assessment information, local knowledge, and/or any other sources." So there has been no agricultural production on the subject properties since the development agreement enabling the development of the abattoir and processing plant. In addition to reviewing Schedule F, the Land Cover Map, staff reviewed historical aerial photography from 1973 and 1987, as well as digital aerial photography from 2011 and 2015. Schedule F, the 2012 Land Cover Map, indicates that the front portion of the subject properties were in active agriculture production at that time. As, sorry, as has been previously discussed, the method used to generate this map has difficulty differentiating between cleared land and land in agricultural production. The aerial photography from 1973 and 1987 indicate that these lands were in agricultural production at the time that those photos were taken. Since 2004, existing and new buildings on the property have been used for an abattoir and butcher shop. Agricultural production has not occurred on the land since that time. Since the property has been used for a ti- sorry, since that time, the property has been used for more industrial nature than the other uses permitted in the underlying zone. Staff are of the opinion that a change to another industrial use to facilitate the reuse of the buildings is appropriate at this time. Lands that were in agricultural production in the past are not proposed to be further developed with buildings or structures that would limit their reuse for agriculture in the future. Resources consulted indicate that the area proposed to be developed as an asphalt plant was not in agriculture production and was wooded up until very recently. So 3.4.2.3 continued that the proposal would not rezone more land than required for the specific cited, for the specific proposal cited in the application. So the subject properties combined, as I stated, are approximately 39 acres in size, and the proposed area for rezoning is 17.37 acres. This does take into consideration having the access location, sorry, reutilizing the existing access location, and keeping it away from the residential properties along Highway 201. By keeping it on the property at 1291 Highway 201, the area proposed to be rezoned is only large enough for the proposed application and will enable the applicants to have some wiggle room for growth, should they want to grow their business. Staff worked to ensure that the area to be rezoned was consistent with council's policies. So C, will not create undue conflict with nearby agricultural uses or rural residents. Staff do not expect the proposed uses to create undue conflict with nearby agricultural uses or rural residents. The negative impacts associated with asphalt plants, such as noise, dust, and odors, are also associated with agricultural activity, generally speaking. The business and construction contractors' use will be performed primarily off-site, and self-storage facilities are generally seen to have very low impact on neighboring properties. And D, meets the general land use bylaw amendment criteria set out in Section 5.3 Development Agreements and Amendment to the Land Use Bylaw. So Section 5.3 of the Municipal Planning Strategy contains several general criteria for applications for a map amendment to the land use bylaw. These criteria consider the impact on the proposal on the road network, services, development pattern, environment, as well as the proposal's consistency with the intent of the municipal planning strategy. So we'll look at that on the next slide. So looking at the general criteria, this proposal is within keeping with the municipal planning strategy. There would be no financial impact on the municipality. There is compatibility with land use. There would be no creation of excessive traffic hazards or congestion, and there is adequacy of road network. We did consult with Department of Public Works. There is adequacy of fire protection services and equipment. In terms of environment, we saw no issues with that. As I stated, the applicant would have to go through the provincial process in terms of licensing an asphalt plant, so they would have to go through all of their environmental regulations and site suitability. Staff do not expect the proposed uses to create undue conflict with nearby agricultural uses or rural residents. The negative impacts associated with asphalt plants, such as noise, dust, and odors, are also associated with, or can also be associated with agricultural activity. So right now, we are here at the public hearing. A PIM was held March 28th, a Public Information Meeting, 2022, at the New Beginning Center in Greenwood, and nine letters were sent out to residents within 500 feet of the subject properties. There were five members of the public in attendance. A public information meeting was held, oh, sorry. The applicant and his wife and brother were in attendance, and then five other members of the public. One resident had concerns about property values and noise, and two residents in attendance were in favor of the proposal. For phone calls, there were calls with concerns of smell and distance. The notifications were sent out, but they meant that the 500-feet parameters set out by council's policies were not adequate, in their opinion, for residents to be notified. Council had its first reading in December and voted to take it to a public hearing. So right now, we're at the public hearing. It was advertised in the local newspaper, and nine letters were sent to residents within 500 feet. Should this get second reading, there would be a 14-day appeal period. And that concludes my presentation. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions of clarification from council this evening? Counselor Killen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think the last meeting we had asked the question regarding whether a letter was sent out to CFP Greenwood where it abuts their land. And I think there was a gentleman here from Greenwood that weren't aware that this was happening. I'm wondering if any further application or information came in from Greenwood.
I see Laura Moher has stepped up to the podium. Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Killen, and through the deputy mayor to you. We have had discussions with the gentleman from CFP Greenwood who did show up to Planning Advisory Committee. We conveniently had our Greenwood Source Water Protection Committee meeting just a couple of weeks after the PAC meeting, and he was in attendance along with another representative from CFP Greenwood, as well as provincial representatives from the Department of Environment and Climate Change. And through that committee, we did have a very fulsome discussion around some of the concerns that they had, and they, we all ended up in a very happy place at the end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Counselor. Anything else from council? I just have one. Curious about environmental approval, is the rezoning, is it a prerequisite for them to apply for the permit? Okay, thank you. Anything further from council? Okay. At this point, I'm opening to the members of the public. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this from the public this evening? Come on forward, first one of the night. Just state your name and civic for us, so for the record, and welcome.
My name's Glenn Balby, and I live at 1102 Highway 201, Greenwood. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I do want to clarify a couple things. The asphalt plant, if we get one, and can get approved through environment, which will be very stringent, will be a one unit, and it will be a new unit. It will not be an outdated one with three or four trailers. It's one unit, one trailer. The reason that we want to purchase it is that right now, we are under the control of other companies, and days that we want to pave, we cannot pave because they're mixing something different, and it really tosses a twist in how we get our jobs done. So that's one of the reasons that we're looking at it. The other reason, it's to make our company more efficient. But by saying that, the asphalt plant may not be there ever, you know what I mean? Because we did have another option shown, but we do want the M3 because of our trucks and everything else. The asphalt plant, as you say, will be a provincial thing as we go, but it will be a new plant. And the operation hours of the plant, for ourselves, we would probably only be running it two days a week, because we have to gravel grade, that takes three, then we fire it up. So it would only be running 20 hours a week, starting out. We have no intention to start selling it to everybody else. It's for our own production. I just thought I'd throw that in so you would understand what we're looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Balby.
Thank you.
Anything further from members of the public this evening on this particular file? No one is running to the microphone, so I believe, Katie, I think you're good to go. Thank you so much for your presentations this evening. And we'll now move to Item 4, "Application to Rezone a Property in Waterville from the Residential Medium Density R3 Zone to the Mixed Commercial Residential C3 Zone." And we have Alice Jacob, planner, with us this evening to run us through this file. Welcome, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this is an application for a land use bylaw map amendment to rezone a property in Waterville. The red circle shows the approximate location of the property. The civic address is 5431 Highway 1, Waterville. The property has an existing church, which was built through a development agreement between the municipality and the trustees of Jehovah's Witnesses. It was built in June 198, sorry, it was built in 1988, and the applicant purchased the property in August 2023, intending to convert the church into a funeral home. This would result in some modifications to the structure's interior, like converting an existing toilet into a kitchenette, and also building a new wall in the existing office space to separate it into two different spaces. The church has been non-operational since 2020. The property is located in the residential mixed-density zone, and the zone does not permit funeral homes as of right. The proposed rezoning is to the mixed-commercial residential C3, which permits funeral homes as of right. The development agreement that permits the church on the property was discharged at the council session in December. This map shows the aerial view of the property boundary. It is within the growth center of Waterville, and it has an area of 41,551 square feet. And the property is located along the main transportation corridor, Highway 1. The area is primarily developed with residential uses, and there are also a few commercial uses and agricultural uses as well. A closer look at the property. Over here, we have the existing church, and this is the existing driveway and the parking lot associated with the church. In terms of vegetation, there's vegetation lining the boundary on all three sides, abutting neighboring properties. And there is also a planter box over here, and a grass cover towards the side of the church. In terms of topography, the site is relatively flat, but it sits at a lower level than the road level. Some photographs of the site. The image to the left, we have the view of the parking lot and the driveway, and also the vegetation lining. And to the, the image to the right, it's the existing church. As I mentioned earlier, the property is within the residential mixed-density zone, R3 zone. R3 zone allows a variety of residential uses and a few non-residential uses as well. This is the future land use. The property is expected to continue to be in the residential designation in the future as well. A public information meeting was not required for this application, because according to the planning policies, for any land use bylaw map amendment to rezon properties less than an acre, we don't require a public information meeting. Notification letters were sent to 25 property owners within 500-foot radius. Staff did not receive any concerns or questions. Policy 5.3.3, Criteria A, enables this application, and the policy reads, "Council shall consider amendments to any one of the zoning maps of the land use bylaw, provided the application is for a specific development, and this to rezon land to another zone enabled within the same designation unless the zone change is specifically prohibited within the strategy." So the proposal is to rezon the property from the residential mixed-density R3 zone to the mixed-commercial residential C3 zone, which is enabled within the same designation. Policy 3.1.3 lists the various zones that are enabled within the residential designation. As we can see here, Criteria D enables the mixed-commercial residential, sorry, C3 zone, and it further directs to Policy 3.2.2C, which is the zone intent. I will come back to this in a few seconds. And Policy 5.3.5 provides additional policy directions in terms of the zone placement and impacts to be considered when rezoning a property. And the policy reads, "Council shall consider in relation to all applications to rezon land, A, the applicable zone placement policies, including any specific policy criteria for applying the proposed zone set out within the strategy, and B, the impact of both the specific development proposal and of other possible uses permitted in the proposed zone." Now going back to the zone intent. So the intent of the mixed-commercial residential C3 zone is to complement the established commercial areas and provide flexibility to permit both residential and lower-impact commercial uses. And the policy also states, "These areas shall generally be located on main transportation corridors and associated side streets that have commercial development, and traditional main street areas within commercial areas that have not yet experienced much development, or areas where flexibility between residential and commercial uses is desired." So the property, the subject property, is located on a main transportation corridor, and there are several commercial establishments lining Highway 1. But the developments become more residential towards the location of the subject property. But if we look at the zoning of the area where the subject property is located, there are a variety of zones found within the, within close proximity. So as we can see, there are C, there are two existing C3 zone on either side of the property, which is, sorry, the mixed-commercial residential C3 zone. And there are also the general commercial C1 zone properties close by as well. And other than that, we also have the residential multi-unit R4 agricultural A1 zone, light industrial commercial M1, heavy industrial M2, and institutional I1 zones, which are all found within 1-kilometer radius of the subject property, which indicates that this is an area where flexibility in the types of uses permitted is desirable. And the current zoning of the property, which is the residential mixed-density, the R3 zone permits wide-ranging, sorry, wide-ranging residential developments, including multi-units up to eight units, and it also permits some non-residential uses, which includes places of worship and other community facilities. And in case of places of worship, these are also facilities that generally offer funeral services. The proposed rezoning to C3, which is a mixed-commercial residential, this zone also permits wide-ranging residential uses, including multi-units and other low-impact commercial uses, which are preferred close to a residential area. The proposed funeral home can also be built as of right in any of these C3 zones, which is found within proximity to the property or even the C1 zones. So staffer of the opinion that the proposed rezoning- So staffer of the opinion that the proposed rezoning meets the applicable zone placement policies. And in terms of the impact and the propose, the proposal and the other permitted uses within the C3 zone are appropriate and reasonable. These are some, some of the support, supporting visions, objectives, and policies for this application. These are, the slide here shows the objectives and visions related to growth center and infrastructure. The proposed development aligns with council's intention to direct urban development to growth centers. And the development is also consistent with council's intention to maximize infrastructure efficiencies. And these are some objectives related to transportation. The development is consistent with council's intentions to encourage development densities along major transportation corridors and to also promote the development of compact complete communities. And these are some of the objectives, goals, and policies related to economic development. The rezoning would enable the applicant to relocate his business from its existing location in Windsor to the proposed location in Waterville. The proposal will be consistent with the council's intentions to encourage entrepreneurship, and it can also meet the economic development goals of the municipality. Moving on to general policies, the proposal is in keeping with the intent of the MPS. There is no conflict with the municipal bylaws or regulations. There is no financial impact on the municipality because of the proposal. In terms of land use compatibility, staffer of the opinion that the development will be compatible with the surrounding uses, given the variety of zones found within the area. There is adequate sewer and water services to service the property. And in terms of traffic, the Department of Public Works has confirmed the adequacy of road networks and did not indicate any concerns. There is adequate fire protection as well. There is no flooding or serious drainage problems are not expected from the proposal. The site is suitable in terms of great soils and geological conditions and other aspects listed here. As mentioned previously, a public information meeting was not required, and AAC was not required for this application either. The application went to PAC in November, and it went to first reading in December. We are currently at the public hearing. Properties within five hundred feet were notified for this public hearing, and it was also advertised in the local newspaper. With that, I conclude my presentation, and I pass it back to the chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council this evening? I don't see any. Are there any representations from the public who wish to comment on the matter at hand? Okay. I see no one running to the microphone, so we will conclude this item. Thank you very much, Alice, for your presentation this evening. At this point, we're moving to item five. Application to enter into development agreement to permit a comprehensive neighborhood development in Port Williams. Laura Moser, manager of planning, is here to present this file. Welcome back to the microphone, Laura.
Good evening, council. As Deputy Mayor said, this application is for a development agreement application in Port Williams for comprehensive residential development on the west side of Collins Road.
You're pretty quiet, Laura. And I think that there might be some interested parties in the audience based on the
You don't say.
microphone usage in the last couple of presentations. So make sure they can, they get all the information. Thank you.
Absolutely. This is the approximate location of the proposed development agreement. It is in the northeast portion of the growth center of Port Williams. By way of background, the subject property was purchased in twenty eighteen by SAG Development Inc. for the development of a multi-unit cohousing project. Cohousing project is a, a type of land tenure where a development, in this case, it would be an apartment building, is co-owned by all of the residents. And they live in community with varying degrees of optional participation. For our purposes, we are going to call it a multi-unit dwelling. This area, the subject property is identified in a development agreement to the south as an area for future development agreement. So the subject property has been slated for development under an R5 zoning, at least since twenty ten, with the adoption of the Port Williams Secondary Plan. The subject property has a lot area of twenty-eight acres, and it has two separate frontages on Collins Road. The property is currently split zoned with just under twelve acres located within the agricultural zone, which do not form part of this application. And just over the remaining sixteen acres are located within the residential comprehensive development district or R5 zone. This is a map of the subject property outlined in red. The yellow portion that just popped up on the screen is the agricultural zone. And the blue portion that just popped up on the screen is the R5 zone. The proposal has undergone some significant changes since it was first received in accordance with our policies. The development as received was proposed to be a two-phase development with phase one consisting of the thirty-two unit multi-unit dwelling, the cohousing project, as well as thirteen one-unit dwellings in a grouped dwelling format and five one-unit dwellings in a traditional road frontage-based format. Phase two is proposed to consist of eleven one-unit building, one-unit dwellings, as well as two thirty-three unit multi-unit dwellings, for a total of a hundred and seven, twenty-seven units over the sixteen-acre portion of the property. This is the preliminary site plan that was received at the time of the application. This area is identified as phase one. So we see, we see here, this is the proposed cohousing multi-unit dwelling. These would be the traditional one-unit dwellings located along the road. And here would be the thirteen one-unit dwellings in a more grouped dwelling format. The proponents identified these as garden suites. However, that, under our land use by law terminology, they would be considered group dwellings. Phase two consists of a new road. Phase one is the extension of Steeple View Drive. And phase two would include a new public road along the top north portion of the property. And here we see the single unit, one-unit dwellings along the road frontage here and the two multi-units here closer to Collins Road. Through the process of the development agreement, staff and the proponents came to an agreement on the, on a revised proposal that better lines with our policy direction. So the, the development continues to be within two phases, with the first phase being the extension of Steeple View Drive. We've provided some additional flexibility to the proponents in providing up to forty units within the multi-unit dwelling. The thirteen one-unit dwellings along the road are enabled to be one or two unit dwellings. And similarly, the grouped dwell, I'm sorry, it's the thirteen units in a grouped dwelling format. Those are also permitted to be one or two unit dwellings, as well as the five along the road. Phase two, similarly, was granted some additional flexibility in terms of the multi-unit dwellings. And the one-unit dwellings are also enabled to be one or two unit dwellings, bringing the new total number of units to one hundred and seventy-eight units on the subject property. This results in an increased density. So the proposal as received resulted in an overall density of seven point eight units per acre, which is significantly lower than our as-of-right development density in our R1 zone. We have provided greater flexibility to account for market fluctuations. Yep, okay. So again, development would consist of the first phase being the apartment building, having a total height of four stories and consisting of thirty-two residential units. That was what was proposed, up to forty is permitted, and eighteen one-unit dwellings. Phase two is two apartment buildings with three stories each and having thirty-three residential units and eleven one-unit dwellings, by way of reminder. Phase one, I'm sorry, we'll just move on. This is again the preliminary site plan. We did make one adjustment to the proposed phasing, and that is on the corner of the extension of Steeple View Drive and the new public road. These two dwellings here are shown to have frontage on the new road. However, from our regulatory perspective, there would be no difference to have them front on the extension of Steeple View. And so phase one has been adjusted to include those two units, as opposed to requiring them to be located in phase two, which is still the remainder. This is an aerial photograph of the surrounding area. We can see to the northeast and northwest, there are currently agricultural uses occurring. This is consistent with the growth center boundary. All of those lands are located outside of the growth center. To the south and to the southwest, these are all lands within the growth center. And we can see that they are categorized primarily as residential uses. I would note that this is a relatively old aerial photo. There is significantly more development now on Steeple View Drive and Leeside Court than is shown in this aerial photograph. And this is our zoning. We see the lands to the south are also in the R5 zone. That's because these were also developed under a similar process and are governed through a develop, an existing development agreement. Lands to the southwest are located in a similar density, but a far more flexible residential zone, being the R3 zone. There's a small pocket of R4 right at the bottom of our map. And then to the west, the lands are zoned primarily in the R1 and R2 zone. I should also note that we have two well field zones here. These are zone As, these are two wells owned by the village of Port Williams. They are the water utility as well as the sewer utility in this location. And we do see that the subject properties, we see right on the corner of the map, the subject properties are located within well field B. In terms of public consultation, we did hold a public information meeting held at the Port Williams Village Commission offices on March thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. We did have about forty people in attendance on that evening, and a number of concerns were raised. The primary concerns were related to the order of development, specifically with construction traffic accessing the subject property from Steeple View Drive, the height of the multi-unit dwelling, dwellings, the condition of Collins Road at that time, and pedestrian safety due to a lack of sidewalks. Additionally, there were concerns about the density of the proposal, a potential increase in traffic, and safety concerns related to construction vehicles accessing the subject property through Steeple View Drive. Most of these concerns will be addressed through our MPS policies. So I won't address them now, and questions can be asked if there's any clarification needed. In terms of our zone placement policies, policy three point one point two indicates that the comprehensive neighborhood development is applied to lands located that are intended for an integrated and comprehensive planning process to develop larger-scale neighborhoods by development agreement. And our enabling policy is three point one point eleven, which states that the zone shall be applied to air, to properties that are greater than five acres in size that would benefit from a public planning process, either because they're located within the middle of an established community or for some other reason, or they need to be integrated with surrounding lands to meet the goals of the strategy. Policy three point one point thirteen is our enabling policy, which indicates that council shall only consider by development agreement this type of proposal for a comprehensive planned develop, neighborhood development within this zone. And in evaluating such an application, council shall be satisfied that the proposal consists of uses that are consistent with the residential designation. This proposal is entirely residential in nature, although it consists of several different kinds of built form, which speaks to criteria B, which requires a mix of housing options rather than only one building type. So this application consists of one-unit dwellings, two-unit dwellings, grouped dwellings, and multi-unit dwellings. So it's, it is quite a good mix. It's required to have an overall minimum density of four units per acre if serviced by central water and sewer, which this is. It's intended to have a neutral or positive long-term impact on municipal finances as shown by fiscal impact analysis, or the community or environmental benefits outweigh the cost. So staff did consult with other members of municipal staff to determine, to provide an estimate of potential tax revenues as well as potential costs associated with the development. So the municipality is responsible for the road infrastructure in this proposal. The water and sewer services are provided by the village of Port Williams, so we will be discussing road costs only. So the maintenance of the road, including future replacement costs, is roughly thirty meters, thirty dollars per meter of road. This proposal includes roughly five hundred and eighty meters of new road infrastructure, resulting in a total annual cost of seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. By comparison, in terms of tax revenue, the full buildout of phase one is expected to generate between a hundred and sixteen and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. And village revenues for phase one are expected to be between sixty and sixty-four thousand dollars per year. A full buildout phase two is expected to generate between a hundred and forty-one and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the municipality and between seventy and seventy-six thousand dollars for the village on an annual basis. In summary, for those who can't do math in their head like me, at full buildout, both phases, the municipality would generate between two hundred and fifty-seven and two hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of tax revenue as compared to seventeen thousand four hundred dollars in costs. At full buildout, the, the village would benefit from between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and forty thousand dollars in new tax revenue. The range is because we've enabled both one and two-unit dwellings, but there's no way to predict what proportion will be one units and what will be two units. So that's the reason for the range. Criteria E states that council shall consider that the proposal includes appropriate phasing to ensure orderly development that minimizes the creation of vacant parcels of land between the existing and developed lands and the proposed site. There's a few reasons for this. The, the main reason is for the extension of infrastructure. To extend infrastructure through vacant parcels results in a lot of infrastructure that does not generate any kind of tax revenue to offset its costs. Similarly, it does create disjointed communities. So the reason why phase one results in the extension of Steeple View as opposed to constructing the new road first is because coming in off Collins Road from the east and going westward would create a big pocket of vacant land in the corner of the subject property. And by extension, would result in infrastructure that is inefficient to service and maintain, which is criteria F. G, the proposal is meant to encourage active transportation by providing sufficient sidewalks, pathways, and/or trails consistent with the transportation infrastructure policies contained in section two point three, infrastructure. Where this subject property is located within a village, the topic of sidewalks becomes a discussion between the municipality and the village in that the sidewalk would be provided by the developer, but ongoing maintenance, including snow clearing, falls to the responsibility of the village. At the time of the initial development agreement to the south, the village had indicated that it was not interested in taking over new sidewalks. And so sidewalks were not required in that development. Similarly, sidewalks operate best when they're in a network. And so having isolated sidewalks in this development does not contribute to an overall network of sidewalks where the previous development did not have sidewalks. It should also be noted that there are no sidewalks on Collins Road, and where this road falls out of municipal jurisdiction and into provincial jurisdiction, the municipality has very little control over whether or not a sidewalk is installed there as well. However, the development does include a walking trail that it is proposed to extend from Collins Road and is required to be publicly accessible either through the transfer of ownerships to the village or through access easements. This trail system is intended to be and is required to be integrated into the existing trail system in Port Williams, providing active transportation options for residents in this development and connecting other developments to the west, to Collins Road. Criteria H indicates- Criteria H indicates that council shall consider minimizing environmental impact by protecting sensitive natural features and incorporating low-impact approaches for managing stormwater. So there are no sensitive natural features on the subject property or near the subject property, and a drainage plan that incorporates low-impact development standards is required to the satisfaction of the municipal engineer at the time of permitting. I just wanted to take a moment to explain what low-impact approaches for managing stormwater means, because many laypeople probably have no idea. Brad isn't here, so I guess all of this falls to me tonight. In the past, when subdivisions were, and general development was undertaken, stormwater was seen to be a matter that needed to be managed. That's why we call it stormwater management. And the way to do that, we used to do that, involved a lot of heavy infrastructure, so catch basins, stormwater piping. Our approach nowadays is called low-impact, and it seeks to work with nature rather than against it, so taking advantage of natural drainage ways, natural pooling areas to manage stormwater management. The development to the south was also required to utilize low-impact management. I do understand that along Steeple View Drive, there has been some significant drainage issues, especially in the past year. I did want to provide members of the public with an update in that regard. Staff have been having ongoing discussions with the village commission to address this issue along Steeple View Drive, and it has been determined that an additional catch basin is necessary at the intersection of the existing Steeple View Drive and Collins Road. Staff have retained a firm to install that catch basin and are doing the due diligence associated with that at this time. This is a bit of a tricky situation as compared to other communities within the municipality because all of the utilities, in terms of power and internet cable, is all underground, which means that there is one other thing to dodge when installing a catch basin, but those discussions are underway, and we do expect work to begin soon to address the stormwater system. I would point out that traditional stormwater management techniques, including catch basins and stormwater management pipes, were they to be considered for this application, significant upgrades would be necessary to existing infrastructure, and the new infrastructure would be required to be quite a bit larger than is currently proposed. Criteria I indicates that we're meant to provide a minimum 100-foot-wide vegetated buffer within the zone adjacent to the A1 zone. This buffer is intended to be contained within the development and can be used for a park or recreation or service utility purposes, but cannot contain buildings or any other use. The width of the buffer area may be reduced where natural or built features, including but not limited to a ravine, water course, or road, create a buffer with the agricultural A1 zone. So the buffer is proposed along the top end of the site and does include the new future road, but no other development shall be permitted within 100 feet of the zone boundary. Criteria J states that notwithstanding the minimum requirements set out in the subdivision bylaw, that a minimum of 10% open space contribution shall be required. We did discuss that the area to the south is under an existing development agreement. Staff reviewed that development agreement, given that this subject property is also identified on the site plan for that development agreement, and we determined that all open space contribution requirements were met at the time of the existing development agreement, including the lands within the subject property. So we will not be requiring a 10% open space contribution, but we have required the walking trail to be publicly accessible in perpetuity, so an open space dedication on a less formal basis is still occurring. Criteria K pertains to alternative road or lot or servicing, and this is not something that's proposed in this application. Criteria L indicates that sufficient vehicle and pedestrian transportation linkages are required within the village or to adjacent towns and communities, and this does close the loop on a road that is currently a dead end, so it increases the connectivity within this neighborhood, and with the required pedestrian trail, pedestrian access is also increased, providing a linkage to Highway 358 from this property and providing access to Collins Road from properties along Highway 358. And it states that the proposal is required to be consistent with existing and planned development within an adjacent town or village, and where this is very similar to the development to the south, staff are satisfied that this criteria has been met, especially where all the other lands surrounding the proposal are within the A1 zone, and therefore, we don't expect to see any significant development there in the foreseeable future. And N points us to our general development criteria, which we're going to discuss later, but first, let's see how this proposal intends to meet some of our visions, goals, and objectives of the MPS. So under our vision, we're meant to concentrate new development within our growth centers and encourage the efficient delivery of services, as well as encourage a diversity of houses, housing options, and all of these are going to be better achieved through this development rather than in its absence. Within our residential objectives, we're meant to accommodate a wide range of housing options. Again, this proposal includes four different housing types, so this is a really good mix. And we also have a secondary plan in Port Williams, which was adopted in 2010 and seeks to fulfill a vision statement, which I think is really quite apt for this development, and it states that Port Williams of the future is a thriving community where people of all ages and stages of life can flourish and where its distinctive character and spirit are respected and valued. The mix of housing, as well as the proposal for a co-housing project, assists in providing housing options for all sorts of different people at all sorts of different ages and abilities. First policy of the Port Williams Secondary Plan requires that all development within the growth center shall be serviced by central water and sewer services, and that is the plan for this development as well. Within the residential goals of the secondary plan, we're meant to accommodate residential growth that meets the needs of ages, residents from all ages and stages of life again, and we're meant to direct higher-density developments to central locations, which is point out that this development is not considered a high-density development, given that its purported density is significantly less than our as-of-right density in our R1 zone. Proposal 4.5.24 governs developments within the R5 zone. This, by way of a bit of history, this policy predates our current R5 policies that we just reviewed, but it was used significantly to inform it, so there are some very similar criteria, so you will forgive me hopefully if I don't address those in great detail yet again. So in developing this type of development, this residential development is meant to be sympathetic to neighboring farms and will not interfere with normal agricultural activities, and in considering, council shall be satisfied that, again, the density is greater than four units per acre, which we've determined it is. The development of the area shall be phased in a manner to allow the largest amount of agricultural land to remain in production as long as possible. The lands are not currently in agricultural production, however, if that was an intention of the proponents, we have phased it in such a way that those lands would be available. C speaks to the 100-foot separation distance, but adds that... I'm sorry. But adds an additional separation distance for lands that are used for intensive livestock operations, and staff are confident that there are no intensive livestock operations in proximity to this subject property. We see here the subject property, and we do see that it was in agricultural production somewhat recently. This is generally just hay, though, on the basis of reports from the proponents. The, these areas are all cropped. As you can see, there are no livestock buildings, no chicken barns, no large dairy operations in the vicinity of the subject property. This again is the R5 portion, and so the 100-foot buffer would occur right along here, and this would be the area where the new road would be installed. Criteria D states that any required vegetated buffer shall include plant material that will grow to an approximate height of 20 feet, so this is meant to minimize the spread of sprays and fertilizers. However, where the land directly to the north is not being farmed in any kind of intensive way, staff do not expect there to be any pesticides, fertilizers, or other sprays. I also would point out that this land to the north of the subject property is currently in village ownership, and so extensive farming operations are not occurring there either. Criteria F speaks to higher-density areas, of which this does not apply. The proposed design and maintenance is meant to adequately protect any identified well fields, so this policy also is a bit of a holdover from times past when oil furnaces were far more prevalent. New development now generally consists of heating through heat pumps or larger-scale developments often use propane, but large-scale oil boilers that result in the storage of very large quantities of oil are fairly uncommon these days, so staff are satisfied that this development will not negatively impact a well field. H relates to open space dedication again, so this does not apply since that requirement was met under the previous development agreement. Similarly, I also does not apply. Criteria J also pertains to well-field protection areas, and similarly, well, it does require a groundwater study be prepared, however, we did not require that for the stated reason of there not being generally a high risk associated with residential uses and well-field zones. And Criteria K speaks to our general criteria, which we will review now. So as we've reviewed, the proposal is in keeping with the intent of the MPS. We've determined that there would be a very positive financial impact on the municipality, given that the lands are surrounded by other residential uses, which have peacefully coexisted with the existing agricultural uses. Staff are not expecting any land use compatibility issues. Staff did consult with the school board, and while they did indicate that some of the schools in the area were nearing capacity, they felt confident they could accommodate any new students. Staff are satisfied that there won't be any additional traffic hazards or congestion. The proponents did have a traffic study prepared in accordance with a scoping exercise performed by the Department of Public Works, and the traffic study was acceptable to them, and so staff are satisfied that it will not generate any additional or unacceptable traffic hazards or congestion. We did consult with the fire chief as well, who indicated that there was adequate fire protection, and the village confirmed that there were adequate water and sewer services. The potential for flooding or serious drainage problems, we did discuss existing drainage problems on Steeple View Drive, however, the proponents for this development did provide a stormwater management plan, which was reviewed by our engineering department and determined to be acceptable at this stage in the process, and a more detailed stormwater management plan will be required at the time of permitting to the satisfaction of the municipal engineer. We don't expect any negative impacts on well fields or other groundwater supplies, nor do we expect pollution, including soil erosion, siltation, or the siltation of water courses. We don't expect there to be any negative impacts on neighboring farming operations, and we are satisfied that the site is suitable in terms of grades and soils. So by summary of the development agreement, it divides the subject property into two phases. Phase One, consisting of the extension of Steeple View Drive, excuse me, and Phase Two, consisting of the new public road connected to Collins Road. The development agreement regulates the location and form of the development, where grade-related built forms are subject to the requirements of residential one and two unit, the residential one and two-unit zone. Grade-related built forms are those that you access directly from a front door, and multi-unit dwellings are subject to the requirements of the residential multi-unit or R4 zone. The development agreement requires a minimum density of four units per acre and regulates the subdivision. This is the site plan that's included in the draft development agreement and identifies the new public, the new public road along the top, as well as the extension of Steeple View Drive along the left-hand side. It identifies an area for grouped dwellings, identifies an area for low-density development, and identifies the area for the multi-unit development. I'd also like to take a moment to point out, there are two stormwater management ponds, a fairly sizable one right here, and another one right here to manage stormwater management, or to manage stormwater. Phase Two identifies a low-density area as well as a multi-unit dwelling area. The development also requires within it a walking trail extending from Collins Road to the existing trail system in the village, requires an increased setback from Collins Road to maintain the 100-foot buffer from the A1 zone to the east. It prohibits driveway access off Collins Road, however, there would be, that would be a driveway access to access the multi-unit dwellings. Staff have consulted with the Department of Public Works and our own engineering department, and there would be nothing preventing the development of a driveway for construction vehicles to be developed in advance of Phase Two, to, in an attempt to keep construction vehicles off Steeple View Drive. However, it should be noted that as a public road, the municipality is unable to restrict access to certain vehicles on Steeple View Drive. And finally, the development agreement regulates the location of parking provided for the Phase Two multi-unit dwellings and requires that parking not be located between the street and the front of the buildings to ensure pedestrian safety. We have included a couple of non-substantive amendment options. One would be changes to the site plan that don't result in the creation of new roads or an increase in the number of units within a multi-unit dwelling, provided that the density is consistent with the requirements of the residential multi-unit zone. And what that means is that the 40 units within each multi-unit dwelling could be reconfigured into a different number of buildings, but the total number would remain the same, and all of the requirements associated with multi-unit dwellings would be required to meet the requirements of the land use bylaw for the R4 zone. And any changes to the phasing of development would also be a non-substantive amendment, but staff would be looking to those policies that speak to large vacant parcels of land prior to making any kind of recommendation to a change in the phasing. This is our process chart for the fourth time this evening. We are here at our public hearing. However, we did hold a public information meeting on March 30th. We held our area advisory committee meeting on October 12th, our planning advisory committee in November, and initial consideration was given last month, that council in December. Following this meeting of council, should council approve the development agreement, a 14-day appeal period would kick off starting next Tuesday, when we place an ad in the paper notifying the public of the passing of the application. And I would pass it back to Madam Chair for comments from the public.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mosher. Questions of clarification from council at this point? Council Armstrong?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mosher. Can I just see one of your maps? It really doesn't matter which one. The, what's below the orange? It looks like a farm.
Sorry, you're still...
There you go.
Sorry about that. It's not a farm. It's a residence at this point. This was part of a larger farm at one time, and I believe, perhaps Ms. Javara could confirm, but I believe that is the original farmhouse.
Okay.
But the balance of all these lands was originally in that same ownership, so it's not...
Well, my curiosity is that in the, in your presentation and in the development agreement, you talk about an agricultural buffer, but the only place that you talk about it is on the north, between the A1 land, which belongs to the village, I think that's what you said, and I'm just curious to know why they're not, there's no talk of an agricultural buffer or any kind of a buffer between all of these new homes and that, that it might be something that the existing people might like to have and maybe the new people might like to have, so I'm just curious to know about that.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Councilor Armstrong, the policy speaks to a buffer between the R5 and the A1 zone, not between the uses specifically, so that property is not in the A1 zone, and therefore, the buffer is not required.
And nobody wants it?
I don't believe I've heard from them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, for your question. Councilor Granger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to Ms. Mosher.
Through you to Ms. Mosher. Just wondering, is the work on Steepleview going to be done in tandem with the development or before development starts happening?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Granger. My understanding is that the work is, is intended to happen very soon, like this winter, well in advance of any development associated with this proposal.
Thank you.
And sorry, Counselor Granger, if you could clarify, did I hear someone? Did I hear Mayor Matard?
No, that was me.
Oh, sorry. I'm scared he's gonna rain down upon us. Counselor Granger, when you say the work on Steepleview, you mean the existing drainage issues?
Drainage issue, yes.
I believe it's, could happen as soon as next week. That was what we received in an email prior to today. So it is not too sweet, as I say.
Good.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions of clarification from council at this point in the public hearing? Seeing none, the floor is now open to the public. If you wish to comment on this proposed development, please approach the microphone and give us your name and civic, and we'd be very pleased to hear from you this evening. And there's a little button if you need to lift up the, there you are.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council and staff. My name is Debra Fendrick. My husband, Richard Ward, and I live to the south of the property. It isn't a farm. It was a farm, and starting from the end of Ms. Mosher's presentation and moving forward to mine, a buffer would be very nice. And I hear that Ms. Mosher says that's not required under the zoning, but my question is, can that be allowed? Is it part of discretion that council has to require that as part of the development? It would certainly be more visually appealing, I, from our point of view, and potentially from the people on the other side. The way it's built right now is the apartment buildings are right up to our property line. That is phase two. We're dealing, obviously, with the development as a whole, and phase two would come later, but certainly, we would like to have a buffer if that is at all possible in terms of the area between our property line and the phase-two buildings. Going forward from what Ms. Mosher said as well then, too, about the drainage issues, that wasn't part of my presentation, and I have a PowerPoint which I think will be put together. And I didn't really understand what the storage, storm management was, so thank you for that. And I understand now that there's that pond that's visualized, and that there'll be some engineer approval of the plan. But I can say that there is a lot of water that goes down from where that collection pond is, down through our property, by that pond that's fronting onto Collins Road. For example, yesterday, it was a literal river going down. And, you know, it doesn't dry up probably till about May, June, and especially this last year, it was extremely wet. We've looked at trying to, you know, deal with it in some fashion, but it's, there's a lot of water in that area, and you can really see it coming down. In fact, a couple of years ago, you could actually see it coming upright out of the ground in that river area, still on our property, but it's downhill. It's, it's quite a rise, you know, where our house is and this property behind, it's a little bit rolling, so there's, oh, if you can put the map up. Is it easy to do?
There should be a remote beside you. Do you have a map in your slideshow, or were you requesting the?
I have it at the end. Yeah, I'll just go right to the end of ours. You get a little preview here of what I was gonna look at. Okay, so this is from the municipal planning strategy, and it's interesting, it's under the R5 development zone, and it's actually the Port Williams development area. But when you look at it, so you're looking in the upper-left corner, that's the Collins Road, and you can see the pond at the bottom, and then this development area.
The last map that Ms. Mosher put up was a very good one.
Oh, okay. Is that easy to bring up, or is it?
We're gonna try.
If you can't, we will use this one.
I think we should be okay.
That one's a little small, because it was just a, okay.
There we go.
All right. So yeah, that is a lot clearer. So when you look, Collins Road is on the right-hand side, there's a pond, it's our property, there's the property line, and then there's the storm collection pond. So it's, that's where the water goes down in terms of against the, the property line, almost like a river when there's a lot of moist, when there's a lot of precipitation and runoff. There is a drain that runs along Collins Road, it's just a ditch, there's no piping or anything, but it would be a concern of ours that there is very adequate drainage work done in terms of the plan, because there will be a lot of water runoff, and if that area is constructed on and disturbed, I can only imagine that there'd be more runoff, because that's what we found when houses have been developed along Steepleview, when the excavator comes in and starts digging. There's a lot of groundwater that starts coming up and diverted in different directions. So A, yes, we'd really like a buffer, and B, we would really want to have the storm drainage addressed, so that there isn't going to be undue water coming onto our property already. So thank you for bringing that back up. So I do have my presentation as well, and as I said, this is from Rick and I. We're not opposed to the development. We, we like the way that the company is, is doing it in terms of the phasing and the measures that they're taking in terms of the trails and the ponds and the mix, the cooperative housing aging in place, I'm not too far away from that, so that obviously is appealing. They've taken into account the, the public comments and bylaws and the need for that housing and the growth of Port Williams. But what we are concerned about is more the municipal responsibility in terms of ensuring that there is good, safe transportation in the area. And it would appear that this is a municipal responsibility, when you look at the bylaw and the policies, and that applies both to vehicles and to pedestrian safety as well. So we're not seeing this strictly, or, or as a developer's responsibility in terms of doing that, but more the municipality's responsibility. In terms of vehicles, you'll see in a later slide that what seems to be a reasonable idea is to develop a new public road that would connect Highway 358 to the development area, and this would reduce congestion at Steepleview and Collins Road, which is the present development, and also further down the intersection of Highway 358 and Stars Point Road, where the church is and where people go up to the post office. We see this as also a public safety matter, there's very limited pedestrian walking room already on Collins Road. Its speed is a big concern. I know that this is a municipality and that it's a seventy-kilometer zone coming down the hill from Collins Road towards Stars Point Road that goes to fifty right by our property. It's ignored. People could fly down that road, people fly up that road, and you'll see in the next slide why that's an issue. I do see it as a high collision and injury potential there, and in addition, there's a bottleneck that can happen, obviously, at the highway of 358 and Stars Point Road. Pedestrian safety, there was a staff planning report that was posted on the website, and Ms. Mosher referred to it in terms of saying, because there's no sidewalks already in existence, there's not a requirement for sidewalks. And that just doesn't seem to make sense if there's never, that means there's never going to be sidewalks. If there's no sidewalks to join to, where does that end? And sidewalks are absolutely essential, I think a lot of other people in the audience will be speaking to that, and that's both within the neighborhood and to the village of Port Williams itself. So this is what, I've just taken a couple photos, this is Collins Road, so this is going from north to south, you know, from Church Street to Stars Point Road. So that's looking down the hill. Just for perspective, that dog is about four months old, so that's almost like a four-foot or less allowance there on the side of the road. And you can see when vehicles come up, they naturally pull over to the middle of the road if they see a pedestrian on the side. Where that vehicle's pulling over is where the driveway is anticipated, and it's kind of at the beginning of the crest of the hill as, as you're going up Collins Road. So as I say, if you imagine that there's going to be these sixty-eight more units in phase one, and there might be two people per unit, you're gonna have potentially sixty-eight more vehicles on the road and also a hundred and thirty-some pedestrians potentially using it. So a lot more traffic, and there already is a lot of pedestrian use on the road. This is the intersection at Highway 358, Stars Point Road that I referred to. Obviously, it's a, it's a four-way intersection, there's a flashing light, people can probably speak to it better here, but in the mornings, there's a lot of congestion coming out of Stars Point Road to get onto Highway 358 to, to go along over the bridge and to the other So what we're looking at, and this is something for council to look at in terms of your authorities, this is looking at the proposed area, and that pond just under the, the yellow part is backing onto the development area. Measuring just, this is a Google Earth representation, that's about two-hundred meters to go over further to the left to what is actually a well station that is serviced by Port Williams, and there's a service road there. So if you go down the service road in the bottom left is Highway 358. So why wouldn't you have another access to Highway 358 rather than funneling the traffic through Steepleview and Collins Road, which already has these existing problems of traffic and pedestrian problems? So this is part of this, the service road. Looks like it's a private road, I don't understand the full ramifications of it all, but this is a service road that goes down to that well station, and that photograph to the right shows looking at the well station over to the development area, and you can see the water wells in the far distance there. So it really isn't that long of a distance. I understand it's a road, and of course, roads aren't cheap, but it does appear that there's a very positive financial benefit to this development in the range of fifty-thousand, fifty, sixty thousand dollars to the village per year and well over a hundred thousand dollars per year to the municipality, because it's only, according to the staffing report, seventeen thousand for existing road structure maintenance. So there is, would appear to be money available. In terms of looking at this, obviously, you would look into it as council in terms of your authority, but the land-use bylaw talks, talks about developing being orderly, economic, and beneficial, and, you know, that's beneficial for the individual, the developer, the neighbors, as well as the general public. It also looks like there's support on the Municipal Government Act, that the council can design, layout, open, expand, construct, and clear streets within the municipality. There appears to be provision under both the Public Highways Act and the Municipal Government Act for cost-sharing agreements with the government, provincial government up to fifty percent. The planning strategy talks about providing, or encouraging, active transportation, providing sufficient sidewalks and pathways according to the infrastructure, and the bottom portion deals with that infrastructure section about permitting the development of new publicly-owned and publicly-maintained roads, water and sewer services, and sidewalks within the growth center, and that's what this development is in. And infrastructure to address safety. The planning document specifically for Port Williams talks about sidewalks are now located on the main roads for safe pedestrian routes, it says, from one end of the growth center to the other, but this is the expansion of the growth center, and there aren't sidewalks doing that, and that the, it's, the, the policy is to maintain and improve the transportation network with a variety of safe transportation options, including walking, transit, used-car pooling, biking. The trail that is proposed still comes out on Collins Road, so it perpetuates the problem that traffic is still gonna be funneled towards, and it's just a trail. People here can talk about it, but is that accessible for strollers and lockers and that type of thing? The policy then goes on to talk about supporting a transportation, safe transportation network, promoting road network designs that manage, improve vehicular traffic flow and reduce pressure on congested intersections, which, you know, looks like Highway 358 and Stars Point Road, and to maintain and improve pedestrian transportation routes and connectivity. So in summary, I guess we're saying that the municipality has the opportunity and the responsibility, starting with this development, to address things that maybe weren't seen in the first development on Steepleview with the absence of sidewalks and connectivity with the major routes. So that's why we're looking at improving, asking you to improve the traffic flow with a new access road and to maintain and improve safe pedestrian routes with sidewalks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Does council have any questions of?
Debra?
Yeah.
Debra?
Hi, my name's Murray Smith, and number forty-two, Steepleview, your worship counselors. Got a few things of my own to start with, but I just wanted to jump up here while her stuff was still on the board. Debra's idea of an access road makes a lot of sense. I know the area she speaks of in front of her house, while I walk my dogs there all the time. When you get to the bottom of, of Steepleview Drive and look up the street, up, up Collins Road to the north, from that intersection, you look directly at a blind crest. It's somewhere between one hundred and two hundred meters away. So we've got somewhere close to thirty houses on the street now, you're looking at adding sixty more. I live halfway up the hill, and I by no means see what comes and goes at the bottom of the hill close to that intersection, but I see what goes by my house, and it's fairly substantive for the number of homes there. You're looking at increasing it by a considerable amount going through that intersection at the bottom. It looks up the hill into this blind crest. It's a seventy-zone that goes into fifty. I have, I did thirty-four years in the mounted police, I did a lot of traffic work. The average car goes by her house between seventy and ninety. They, they, if they adhere to the fifty-zone, the warning sign, and the one below it, they let off the gas, but they continue to coast on by at high speed. So the idea of putting in the separate access road would help alleviate the issue with that blind crest. It's, would be just almost where she's standing now, if you look at that truck picture. So the, the cars come across the top of the hill, down into the, the blind area, then pop over the crest, and you're trying to get out of Steepleview, which is a real pain sometimes with the, the ice that's building up there now, because you get on top of that, you come to a stop, and then you try and get going again, just about the time your tires catch the pavement, pop you out into traffic, you're looking up the road and a car coming over the blind crest. With also, another blind crest is with your picture there of Stars Point right here in Steepleview, or, sorry, Stars Point and 358. Most traffic gets to this intersection and wants to turn left towards town, towards, Wolfville and Minus. Immediately to your left, coming this way is another blind crest. And that's why you get the traffic buildup there. People get there to this flashing light and sit and wait, and sit and wait. You look to, you look to the north, and sightlines are broken by trees and stuff, you, you know, you can see cars and you can't, they're in behind trees, and then they're back in, in between them, and then you look left, and you go to Blind Crest, and you're, you're trying to get out of there, and the backup gets, it's delayed, and then, like you said, Debra, I think both intersections are ripe for serious collisions, especially with the amount of increase in vehicles you're talking about in both phases, or potential vehicles for the homes in both phases. If, if another access road were built just north of it and took you out through the exact area and popped you out on the, to the 358, I think you would go a long way to alleviate potential safety risks there, and kind of split up the traffic and where it's going, and, and maybe make a lot of people, have a lot fewer. and maybe make a lot of people have a lot fewer complaints to council and police about the traffic going by over the long term. So I just wanted to jump up while you had your stuff up, because I didn't know, I'd never thought of that idea, but I support it, because, as I say, you've got two blind crests and two established roads. You might be able to cut the one out on Collins and regrade the road, but that would require substantial cutting of the roadbed. The one at Stars Point Road and three fifty-eight, you can't change that because of all the established homes that are so close to it, which is, there's no way. You do have a flashing light there that helps a bit, but it doesn't get the traffic out now that's in the area, let alone what is projected. Thank you.
Nice.
Wanted to help. I have a few other questions. The original proposal, what date was that actually tendered before there were any modifications made to it?
Through you, Madam Chair, the application was received January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
I think you're going to hear from a lot of people who bought their properties and built their houses that weren't, us being one of them, who weren't given any idea that this is proposed for the end of their street, thought they were buying on a nice, quiet street, and bought their, bought their properties, bought their houses, and then had this laid upon them. I'm not happy about it.
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta get in the mic a little bit, sorry. It's kind of far back on the podium, but...
Okay. As, like I was saying, the, the date of that proposal versus the date of a lot of people building on that street, building fairly recently, and not having any notion that there was going to be high density being built up the street from them, I think you're going to hear a lot of people talking about that tonight. I'm not pleased about it, with all the, the things that come with, you know, the higher density, the noise, the traffic, the, you know, things of that effect, but I'm not going to beat that horse right now. The, I do have a question about the first units going in. You said the units are co-owned?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the speaker, it's a co-housing development, so yeah, it's all co-owned.
Do the owners have to live there, or can they rent them out?
The municipality doesn't control tenure or residence, so no different than a multi-unit dwelling. It would not be our responsibility to control who lives in any given unit, whether owned or rented.
Okay. The, you mentioned developing from the other end would create a disjuncted neighborhood. What do you mean by that? And did, were any sociological studies reviewed, or is there any sociological background or backup to that claim of a disjuncted neighborhood?
So if we look at the site plan, if development was to occur here first, all of this would be vacant. So it creates a pocket where this is not connected to the existing development in the community.
Yeah. Okay, so physically, there's a disjuncted bit of land, but it doesn't create a disjuncted neighborhood. Neighborhood's a sociological concept.
I'm just encourage, just...
You know, I just...
We just don't want to enter into a debate.
I'd like to know what was studied to come up with that conclusion.
I think what Ms. Moser was referencing was the, the way the infrastructure gets developed, but...
It's not how it came across. It came across like the neighborhood falls apart. I don't see that. I don't get that. I don't see why you couldn't stare at the other end and come in.
Okay.
Just, I'd like to know what, where that opinion arose from. The pond on the south side, is that going to be piped together with the pond up by the new unit? Are they going to be piped together?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the speaker, I'm not an engineer. The, our engineering department reviewed it. It is required, the plan is required to be to their satisfaction. I, I'm not aware of what piping is proposed through the site for stormwater management, but our engineering department did review the preliminary plans and did not find any, any deficiencies in that regard.
Okay. Reason I ask is I can't see the left-hand pond helping the drain. You know, water flows downhill, and everything to the, to the top of that map is uphill. And as the water comes down, it's going to hit the upward gutter and flow along the gutter. It won't cross the crest of the road and make it into that pond unless that southern pond is, is piped together with it. So I don't see it helping any with, with the information we're given so far. Is there any way to get a copy of the storm, stormwater proposal, plan?
Ms. Moser?
Through you, Madam Chair, that's something we can certainly review in-house. If you want to send me an email or give me a call sometime tomorrow, and I can take your contact information, and if that is something we can release, then I will do so.
You mentioned that they're going to put a catch basin at the bottom of the street. That's going to fix the intersection, but that's not going to fix the water running down the north gutter, freezing across everybody's driveway all winter long. We have a water issue there now, and I had the engineer from the county come to my house within the last three months, and he said, and I was discussing how I can get the water legally off my property and taken care of. And he said, well, he and I walked the entire length of the street, and he said, yeah, we really need several more catch basins along this street. So that it's not, it's being caught intermittently along the road instead of freezing, you know, my water going downhill and freezing across my next neighbor's driveway, and so on, and so on. I really don't think one catch basin's going to do it. Again, that's why I'd like to see the plan. How quickly will Phase Two be implemented? I've seen developments like this, you know, Phase One gets built, Phase Two gets put off for five years, ten years. Be nice to know if there's any kind of a timeline on it, because again, it would go to alleviating a lot of people's fears if that new road is put in for the phase and potentially the bypass road, knowing how long this whole thing's going to take. That's pretty much my concerns. I'm probably going to have some questions arise, and then I'll call through to the, to the county office, but appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you're welcome to come back up if you need to later in the night. Come on up to the podium. I am going to ask that after you come on up and we hear from you, we'll take just a quick break, and then come back, ten minutes at the most. It's a lot of information to take in in one evening all at once, and so we're better councilors when we can fully absorb everything you're saying to us. Go ahead, sir, unless your name and civic.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Dyke. I live at sixty-eight Steepleview Drive.
Would it be possible to bring up the map that shows the apartment building in the Zone One with its parking lot, please?
I'd just like to apologize in advance for my lack of preparation. Notwithstanding being a taxpayer for over twelve months, I've yet to receive any correspondence associated with this development, and literally, it's in my back garden. My mitigation strategy to my privacy is a can of black paint to paint over my bedroom window. That's how close I am to this development.
Now, you had another one that showed the parking lot associated with, with the development.
I believe that's the only one that shows the parking lot.
Well, I, I disagree, but notwithstanding that, first of all, when you talk about the trail along Collins Road...
Was this the one you meant?
That one'll do, but it isn't the one. The trail is not a trail. It's an unpaved road shoulder of loose gravel. It will not support a side-by-side carriage for someone pushing a carriage. My puppy leaves footprints in it. I can't safely walk on it, and I'm not grossly overweight, so it is not a trail, and please don't perceive it as a safe passage, because it isn't. Now, where I live, which is if you look at the map, the large area where the apartment building is going to go, there's that little neck on the bottom left-hand side, that's a partial road, and I'm guessing, notwithstanding it's not being mentioned in any of the documentation, is going to be the access road up into that apartment building. So directly across the street from that is the Canada Post Super Mailbox. That's the vehicle collection area every morning in my neighborhood. When the mail's delivered, people come to pick up their mail. They either walk up there, or they drive up, depending about how far they, far away they are. There's been discussions about, the county has done a, a traffic evaluation of Collins Road and decided that there's no concerns with traffic on Collins Road. Well, I don't live on Collins Road. I live on Steepleview Drive. At total capacity, based on an average of two cars per household, which is the average in my neighborhood on Steepleview Drive right now, it represents a five-hundred percent increase in traffic on Steepleview Drive. The bottom of Steepleview Drive, where we have a current icing problem, where a catch basin is going to go in, is where the school bus stops every morning. It's his turnaround point. So notwithstanding the challenges of the blind crest, which are challenges because of significant unfettered speed, that's a high pedestrian area, partial times of the day. Most people who walk their dogs go down through the trail, which is where Canada Post Super Mailbox is, go through the sports field when they get there, and come back up Collins Road. I walk my dog there multiple times a day. I cannot safely walk with my dog with ongoing traffic. I have to get off the road, go onto the shore, and hold my dog. It simply isn't safe. And that's normal vehicles. When a farm vehicle goes down through there, there's barely enough asphalt for some of the wide-body farm vehicles that come there. Yet there's no controls on the road for speed, and apparently, the village has abrogated any responsibility for traffic congestion on Steepleview, because Collins Road doesn't have a problem. I, I see significant safety issues. I'm a senior. I like to think I'm pretty spry, but my days of spriness are going, and I only just got here. It isn't safe to walk along Collins to come into Steepleview right now with the volume of traffic we already have. So a five-hundred percent increase is a significant safety issue, and it can't be ignored. If we look at the development where the apartment building is supposed to go, it has a parking lot. It will have snow and ice control measures. Typically, that means laying down salt or brine to control icing when the temperatures go to that point. With snow clearing, snow will be piled up somewhere, either up against the back of my property line or down towards the, the large farmhouse property, but it will be piled up, which will mean a slow release of toxic water throughout the spring thaw. The catch basin has to deal with water that starts up at my property. Right now, there's a vegetation cap up there in that area which holds back some of the water, and "some" is an overstatement. Most of the properties along there have had to put in secondary water drainage systems, French drains. I put in a catch basin at the top of my property to deal with the flow off of a vegetated field. When that vegetation is stripped, to put an apartment building and a parking lot up there, there's nothing holding the water back. And to hear a few days after they approve the proposal, they have to submit a water drainage plan, which the preliminary plan apparently isn't a public document, I find that an outrage. I've spent well over a thousand dollars just this year as a new homeowner trying to save my property from runoff from that field, and now I've lost a little bit of restraint that I have when I lose the vegetation cap, and there's no suggestion there's any issue associated with drainage off of that field into the residences along Steepleview Drive. Yes, I understand the concern of protecting the wells, but the topography of that area primarily is the higher crest is further back, which means most of the water runs towards Steepleview Drive. And there has to be a robust stormwater system put in to address the water that's going to come off of there, particularly when there's no vegetation to hold back what comes down. And we get lots of rain here, and occasionally we get lots of snow. So those problems aren't going to go away. As I said, again, I apologize for not being particularly cohesive in my arguments, because I was denied the opportunity to prepare for this meeting. Notwithstanding paying taxes for twelve months, and I purchased two pet licenses, so I've submitted numerous payments to the county and the village. I don't seem to be on anybody's mailing list, and I am not five hundred feet away. I am there. I guess I'll conclude right there, but thank you for your time, ma'am.
You're welcome, and like, the same applies if you need to come on back up, and I apologize that you're, yeah, that you didn't have the time. So if you don't mind, we'll take, we're allowed to take a recess from a public hearing, I assume? I don't have to say, okay, we're, okay. We will take a, just a ten-minute recess. It's seven fifty-seven. We'll be back at eight oh seven promptly, and I would ask everyone, make their way back to their seats at eight oh five, so we can really get this on time. Thank you very, very much, everyone. Thank you very much, everyone. So this is a big, big week for council, so appreciate your patience with the process. Just a couple housekeeping notes. When addressing council, just ensure to channel your questions through me as the chair, not directly to staff, that'd be awesome, as per the rules of order. And secondly, if you're making... The sound in this room, if you haven't noticed, is a little wonky, and so sometimes if you're making comments from the back, they can be heard in certain places around the room, louder than you might imagine they can be heard. So if you are having conversations in your seat, just make sure they're very quiet, or you can head out into the lobby, totally fine. Just because sound... It's like a vortex in here, sound travels in the most mysterious ways, which can be great sometimes and not so great others, so just please keep that in mind if you're having conversations in your chairs, which are permitted just quietly. Thank you so much. The floor is back open, I believe the mayor's on, listening, so hello, Mayor Matarde. Come on up, yeah, welcome back. And could you please just restate your name, because I actually missed it the first time.
Certainly, Murray Smith, number 42 Steepleview. Just a quick addendum to what I said before about traffic. Also comes to mind, at the bottom of Collins Road, where it meets Stars Point Road, stop sign by the old juice factory there, and you actually, when you try to clear traffic left, you actually don't look out of your window at 90 degrees, you look out at about 110, around trees and whatnot. So you've got three situations in short order. Bottom, you know, all this traffic coming out of Steepleview, all this traffic with this bad intersection, and then all the traffic trying to get out onto 358. It's been stated by someone else already, and myself, that, you know, it's an accident waiting to happen. You've got these three bad spots in short order. You're going to have people making desperate moves. They'll get frustrated. Again, I enforce traffic laws for years, I've written traffic bylaws in my duties in Alberta. But you're going to have people making desperate moves, especially at that last one, get it out on the 358. And I really think that idea of the further access road would be a great idea. Frankly, I'd probably get to the bottom of Collins and turn left, or the bottom of Steepleview and turn left up Collins and make the route around to miss all that other mayhem, but that's me. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Come on up.
Deputy Mayor, councilors, thanks very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am Ryan Dial of at 55 Steepleview. I have many reasons to oppose this proposed project, but I'll try to limit the scope of my arguments to really the safety issue that this represents. Given the number of units, I think it was 178 was the most recent number that was put up on the screen earlier tonight, and based on the developer's own calculations for required parking spaces, I believe they use 1.5. So at 1.5 vehicles per unit, that gives us 287 vehicles. Now, with a number that high, I don't know how Ms. Mosier comes to the conclusion that that is not going to result in congestion and/or a safety hazard. The issue with the children going to school, we have a lot of young children on our street. I would say right now, there's about a dozen who are school age, or who will be school age in this upcoming year, and they wait for the bus at the corner of Collins Road and Steepleview. Now, even before people start buying the units and will be using our street exclusively, because I don't have faith that that Phase 2 will be started anytime soon, or be complete, we're going to have construction vehicles using our street. So that's heavy machinery of all kinds, excavators, dump trucks, cement mixers, and they will start work at the same time that our children wait to go to school. You've heard that we don't have sidewalks, so the children who are going to be facing this hazard will be facing it from the corner of the street. So I don't know what the proposed solution is, as far as what these children are supposed to do in the event that this proposal is approved. But I would be slow to believe you if you told me that you would approve this if it was on your street with your children. The next issue, the proposed Phase 2 with the street north of Steepleview. I still have not heard tonight a valid reason as to why that cannot be started at the beginning of the project. This idea that it somehow will result in the project not being able to be complete as it is designed has not been touched on or shown to be true in any way here tonight. You've got millions of dollars invested, consultants of all kinds, contractors, engineers. If somebody's unable to start the project from that point, I say it's for lack of trying, not for any other reason. And unless there's somebody here who can prove me wrong, I'll maintain that viewpoint. And again, the fact, I didn't know that this was originally approved in 2010, but that is quite a slap in the face to the people who moved into this neighborhood and built their homes two, three years ago. This information should have been made public, or at least distributed to a much wider degree than it was. And again, I think Glenn said, with regards to the letters that you sent out, the majority of the people on our street did not receive those. We had residents of Steepleview going around themselves, handing out copies, so that the residents who didn't receive them knew what was happening, and thankfully, they did, because we have quite a turnout here this evening. So for those reasons, and again, I'm not suggesting that this development not happen, I'm suggesting that it does not happen with the timeframe and as it is proposed here this evening. I don't have faith that Phase 2 will be complete, and for me, that is a showstopper, and pretty much the biggest reason that I have. We can't have that many vehicles and pieces of heavy machinery using Steepleview Drive as their only access point. It's just not safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Come on up, welcome to this public hearing.
Thank you.
State your name and address, thanks.
My name is Jeff Greenup, I live at number 12 Steepleview, and thank you for allowing me to give some input tonight, and hello to all the people here, and thank the speakers that have been up also, they've made very good points. I'll be pretty brief, but what I want to say is important, I think, on a number of reasons. The drainage issue, which has been mentioned obviously before, but it's very poor drainage on Steepleview, for whatever reasons, lack of drainage I think will be the main one. It's a major safety concern, as far as I'm concerned, and I think all others on the street. Especially in the colder months, the amount of ice buildup that's been there recently is major. It was just cleared off there, I think it was yesterday, or the day before, because it was so bad. The school bus, there's actually three school buses coming into that intersection, and they come in twice a day, like to drop off and to pick up, so that's six separate movements in that area. Traffic coming down Steepleview, I've spoken to several people who've lost control at the intersection, gone out into the road, into Collins. So as far as that goes, the first phase of the development is extending Steepleview further up the hill to the north and to the west. In doing that, it would appear that the drainage requirements will only increase, creating more of a problem lower down Steepleview. One catch basin just isn't going to cut it. It needs some major work there to correct this. Secondly, from a water perspective, there's also a steady flow of water which comes out of the ground on the sides of the road, in particular at the lower properties, and that's, I believe, is from the conduit that carries the buried utilities down the side of the road. I've been told this by more than one person, who should know more than I do about these situations, and I believe that's probably where it's coming from. Again, extending Steepleview, extending the services and the conduits further up the hill, and it is up the hill, will bring even more water down to the bottom. There was a, I believe a few years ago, I was told by council guy that there was actually a French drain put in at the bottom property, the one that's below me, I'm the second one in on the right side, in front of the bottom one, because of issues with the water, there was a French drain put in at that time. That appears not to be working anymore, because the water is actually coming up out of the road at the bottom of the hill. And you can see it in several places coming up the road. You can see it backing up from my place, I've got like a swamp in the front of my place, on the yard, and the council, the villagers, as I said, did check for a water leak, almost 12 months ago. Couldn't find a water leak, decided it was probably groundwater, and would wait and see if that dried up. It was actually in about February time, I think, or April when they did this, and then they left it to see if it would dry up over time. It never has, and right now, it's worse than it ever was, so I can only assume more water's coming down from the top, probably because of the other developments on Steepleview that have taken place in the last few months, the last year or so. And that's really what I see. So the extension of the road, and the extension of the utilities, et cetera, can only make the situation worse, I can't see it'll improve anything, so. I do believe we need to make some major changes to the drainage system, because what's there right now, it isn't working. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Oh, I just have a... Council Greenger, yeah?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to remind people, when they come up to the mic, can you really speak into it, so we can hear you, and the recording can hear you as well? I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, councilor. Again, it's just, it's a vortex.
Council and Deputy Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Philip Boyle, and I live on the third house up on Steepleview, on the right, and we moved there a year and a half ago. And since then, I've been pretty horrified by the Wild West scenario with regard to the water management. We have basically, the builder built a swale down the property line of the Fendricks, the couple who have such a beautiful property behind us. And that runs like a creek down there, it may have, now with new housing construction, it may affect that now, and affect the flow. We also seem to have Steepleview Creek running down, a muddy creek running down our road. We're living in a similar development on Vancouver Island in Shemaneus a year and a half ago. Every house had piping around the foundation, and had clearouts for the owners to clear out the stormwater, if there was ever a blockage, which there wasn't. We could have seven days of sustained rain, heavy rain, west coast Pacific rain, pineapple express, as they called it, and our lot would be bone dry, because the council had insisted that every property in that area, the builders put in really that every property in that area, the builders put in really good storm sewer drainage systems for every house. Every downspout was drained into that system, and it all, the water was all drained away properly. Shemanes is only a small municipality, about 4,000 people, so it didn't have a massive number of taxpayers. I can see that council is anxious to have new developments and more revenue from tax, a bigger tax base, and that's a very legitimate concern, but I think we must put some, we must call out the bylaws. Right now, we have people draining onto the properties next to them or installing after the fact French drains which run onto the street because the, apparently we have one sewer pipe, storm sewer pipe that goes down the middle of the road. The builder told me that he wasn't allowed to tie into it, somebody else told me that you need a permit, you need to have it signed off if you do that. It would have been a lot better if the piping had been put in from the start. It's a lot harder for homeowners after they've bought a house to start trying to tear up the lot and put in French drains, and then they don't have access to the storm sewers, so they end up, what people are doing is improvising and just running the French drains they've put in onto the road itself, which adds to this Steepleview creek that runs down there. And as my neighbor mentioned, it's dangerous, it's an accident waiting to happen for the kids at the bottom of the street. And my concern is, when I called up, a neighbor of ours was putting in a swimming pool, and nice people, and he was just as concerned as I was that it wasn't being drained properly, that people installing it put an outlet pipe just onto the property next door, so it was going to drain onto the next door property, then onto ours. He got after, the owner got after the company, and they, he said they didn't want to do it, but they put a drain down to the front of the property and doesn't go into the storm sewer, but it, when I complained about it before anything was done, I was told, oh, it's a civil matter, you can take them to court. But that seems absolute nonsense to me. I mean, I shouldn't have to fork out thousands of dollars and hire a lawyer and go to court over the issue when this should, infrastructure should be put in, should be mandatory as the houses are built. Every house should be drained into the storm sewer system, and then we wouldn't have this ridiculous flow of water down Steepleview Drive. It's far easier if it's done right the first time, instead of homeowners having to try and improvise and solve the problem afterwards. So my big concern with this new development, it was mentioned earlier that, oh, let nature take its course, low impact, low impact water dispersal. Well, wouldn't it be lovely if that was true? Try telling that to people whose homes have been flooded in some areas. You know, we, right now, we have swales and things like that, which are just temporary, because nobody's going to leave a great ugly swale running down the side of the house or down the back of the house, that kind of landscape, and try and make it look more attractive. It seems to me sometimes the underground wiring is used as a kind of holding basin for water, a whole lot of gravel is thrown in there, but eventually it pops up and like a spring comes out of there and runs onto the soggy lots and onto the road. So what I'm saying is that although we do want development, we need to enforce bylaws, we need to make sure people aren't just redirecting water under their neighbors' properties. We want to make sure that it's taken care of in the first place, that proper infrastructure is put in. It'll cost the developers money. We might be afraid it scares them off. Well, too bad, if they're not good developers anyway, we don't want them. We want developers who do care about the community, who do put in proper storm sewer systems, who do drain the properties properly, and who do care about the neighborhood and care about the people downhill from where their development is. So that's my major concern. Nobody wants to live on a soggy lot and have a mess of water coming down the street or onto their property all the time. So I'm asking council if you will enforce bylaws and you will make sure or set rules for builders so they do properly drain these properties so that it's done properly the first time. It's a lot better than digging things up and trying to salvage things afterwards. So anyway, that's my point that I want to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the public hearing.
Thank you very much. This is the first one for myself. Deputy Mayor, councilors, Fredrick Duncan, 43 Steepleview Drive. I've got one letter that's going to be coming from Mr. Mike and Alice Vienma. They unfortunately couldn't make it this evening, but they're from 47 Steepleview. And as read, "We look forward to seeing our neighborhood develop and are therefore in favor for seeing the residence being constructed as planned. We are, however, concerned about the heavy trucks and much traffic that can be expected during this construction. In our view, the traffic will result in the safety of the children and pedestrians onboard, or the children and pedestrians being compromised, and the traffic will significantly degrade the pavement on Steepleview Drive. Therefore, it should be a requirement of the developers that the road that is planned to give a new development access off of Collins Road be in place before the construction begins. The new road, not Steepleview Drive, should be an entry for crews, trucks, and equipment for the development of this space." Hearing a lot of people talk so far this evening, I don't think the issue is having Steepleview access for the residents once the development is completed, but it's more for the construction equipment that is on the street. I've been on the street now since 2018, and the street cannot handle more than three construction builds at the time. We just went through it, what, eight months ago? And we had issues of sediment, water buildup, hurricane season, there's debris flying throughout the neighborhoods. It's getting caught in everybody's yard. We've had tackles with the developers of Steepleview previously about cleaning up debris from storms. So again, the issue is to keep the construction vehicles off the road. We've got 12 children, two of them are mine. I don't want to be worried about a dump truck running down the road, okay? My kid, two and a half years old, trying to explain to him what a dump truck's going to do to him, that's not a funny story. And we need to have a plan in place before something happens, okay? After the fact, hindsight 2020, isn't good when I've got a dead son, all right? Let's just weigh this in properly. We don't want a developed road, we don't need something that is done and sewer and power and everything. We're just asking for a road for access that the construction vehicles are off our street while we're running. I'm pretty sure this is the way it's going to go. Also, we've also had wildfires earlier this year. Are there no provisions for means of access? You know, this was an item that was brought to my attention from another resident onboard on our street. And yeah, that's pretty much my big beef, is these construction vehicles on the road. I've been on this street now, and I've watched almost every house being built on the street, and it's a mess. The developer, not the developers, sorry, but the construction crews, they don't care. You know, excavators, they're driving up the street, marking up the street, dump trucks, they drive the curb that gets damaged. Nobody cares about the community like we do. So all we're trying to do is protect this as one. So we just want to make sure that this protection gets carried forward.
Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you. Come on up, sir. Welcome to public hearing.
Why, thank you. I do, thank you, Council, for hearing us today. I do have a question. Four stories, how tall? I didn't see a foot in the proposal.
Ms. Mosier, could you speak to how tall four stories is?
I think it just said four stories in height.
Sure. Four, it's the way the development agreement is written, it's four stories or 50 feet, whichever is higher, and that's intended to account in part for topography because the site does slope downwards.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Mosier.
50 feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Great point, too. I just want to add, just before I forget, there was a couple of points made on the drainage aspect of things. It is, should be noted that this apartment is pegged to be on exactly the point, that is the highest topography point in the area. It's 170 feet, I think, above sea level. It sits at 38 meters above sea level. It is the highest point in the area. So great points being made today around drainage issues that already currently exist. Love the idea of some catch basin at the bottom of the hill, but the points were also made, what about all the muck and the rocks and the water that is from the bottom of the street to the top of the street? I have reached out to the county going back five months now, looking for some sort of follow-up plan, understanding of how we are going to fix the drainage issue on this street. I've submitted pictures, photos. I haven't so much as got an email or follow-up back. I've included folks from the town on this. I engaged, I think it was Melissa Burgess, put me through to Paul Gray, who's an engineer, put me through to some Omar, who's an engineer. They had discussed the need for silt fencing when developments are made to try to control some of the runoff. There is two constructions, three constructions currently being built, there's still no silt fencing there. Five months, I've asked for something as simple as silt fencing on a development on Steepleview, and I've been ignored, not so much as an email. I've left voicemails, the last one was probably just before Christmas, and I think I just gave up. So great points to be made on drainage, it runs much deeper, I think, than people realize, and it should be noted that this apartment is pegged to be on the highest point in the area. So a few things just I wanted to just bring up, and just kind of looking through the policies and what is leveraged and used to deem this proposal as meeting sufficient needs related to policy. Related to policy, 3.1.13, specifically around the area of sidewalks, a few folks have brought up the issues around sidewalks. So it just reads that providing sufficient sidewalks and pathways or trails are consistent with the transportation infrastructure policy. The committee comments around this in deeming this policy achieved, or I guess, I guess met is the term, is that no new sidewalks were typically provided when new roads are built, although new sidewalks are typically provided when new roads are built. Where there is no new sidewalks currently in this facility, the municipality is not requiring the installation of any new sidewalk. So I just want to be clear on that, because what this reads to me is, so no new sidewalks are, although they're required or typically required when there is new development, where this one currently doesn't have any new sidewalks existing, there's no new sidewalks being required. So how do you meet a sidewalk requirement? By saying they're not required because the new sidewalks won't connect to the non-existing sidewalks. It just, you can't say an requirement is met simply for the fact that it doesn't connect to sidewalks that aren't currently there, and we do need sidewalks, and that's been noted by a number. So I would challenge the met requirement around Section G specifically on 3.1.13 related to sidewalks. I also want to, just before I forget this point as well, there's been a lot of questions around Phase Two brought up by the members here. I just want to ask a question here related to Phase Two, and not really getting clear indications as to why Phase Two could not be considered first, or timelines around Phase Two have been asked as well without really clear answers around it. I'm asking a question, could that be related to a report by the Planning and Development Services to Port Williams that was dated October 12, 2023, that stated, "The applicants have indicated that Phase Two will not proceed unless the growth boundary is extended northward," and also, "They need to have development rights to it." I'd like to note that.
Sure. And actually, I don't think you said your name in civic at the beginning.
Sorry, Dennis McPherson, I'm on 77 Steepleview.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Apologize. So that's a question I'm asking. Could that have anything to do with why Phase Two is currently not being considered to be going first? And if I'm not mistaken, I believe if that is a requirement by the applicant, my question is why? Why are they requesting this be done before Phase Two even happens? Why are they requesting development rights to it? And extending the boundary north, is that not agricultural land?
So staff have their light on, so I look to you, Ms. Mosier, and see if you want to comment on those things.
To you, Madam Chair, to the Speaker, this is a long and storied history. I will begin by saying the report dated October 12 is the staff report related directly to this proposal, so that is the summary of all of our investigations as part of this review. Yes, the applicants have indicated that they will not proceed with Phase Two until such time as the growth center boundary has been expanded, mainly because it's not economically feasible to develop a road without being able to develop both sides of that road. Roads are incredibly expensive to build, so it does not make much sense from a developer's perspective to install and develop a road that can't be developed on both sides. And similarly, from the municipality's perspective, it's not overly efficient or cost-effective to have a road in our ownership that we're responsible for maintenance for when we're not generating tax dollars from both sides. Now, with regard to the growth center boundary expanding, there have been several points in the last, we're 2024 now, 14 years, where the municipality has contemplated expanding that boundary. The first was at the time of adoption of the Port William Secondary Plan in 2010. At that time, council did approve a boundary expansion. However, when the secondary plan went to the province for approval, the province is the approval authority for all planning documents in the province of Nova Scotia, although municipalities do draft the documents, they are ultimately approved and can be amended by the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And the minister in 2010 did amend the Port William Secondary Plan, and one of those amendments was to reduce the boundary in that area. It did extend northward to include all the lands in village ownership at that time under council's adoption, and then it was clawed back by the province. Then again, in 2019, our council voted to, again, expand that boundary to include, at the very least, this, I can't exactly remember if it included the village lands, but it certainly included all of the lands in this subject property. And again, when the documents were sent off to approval by the province, they reduced the boundary yet again. So from the developer's perspective, and I don't want to speak for council, but certainly from a staff perspective, it's not completely unexpected or unheard of to contemplate expanding the boundary northward because it has been attempted and approved by council twice in the past.
Okay. So we just need to make it for the record, then, that Phase Two development, which is within the boundary, is what we're here to discuss today. However, Phase Two will never happen unless the zone of agricultural is rezoned, the boundary is extended. Is that my understanding? I just want to recap that that's my understanding.
Sort of. I, to you, Madam Chair, to the Speaker, I can't speak for the developer's mindset five years from now, but that is within our current economic situation, that they have indicated that it is not financially feasible to develop until it is expanded. But I do believe they are here tonight, so they can perhaps address that as well.
Could we get clarity on that from them right now, or?
Well, they'll be invited up at the end to sort of recap, I think, the broad spectrum of concerns that are being raised.
So that being fact, then, I just, we're here to discuss and approve the proposal as Phase One, Phase Two, but there is a stipulation in this proposal that directly affects a zone boundary, a rezoning of agricultural land to development land, and also directly affects residents of Collins Road, who I guess were probably also not invited to this meeting today. So that should be noted. A few points I want to just kind of continue to kind of progress through, just related again to policy and how they were, I guess, interpreted by myself as I read them, but seeing that these requirements were met, I just have some kind of concerns to address within that. So the 3.1.13, Section D regarding financial and the benefits financially, great ranges, lots of numbers, it's, I think, revenue generation is fantastic for the community, and there's absolutely a lot of positives around that. Just the comment within that policy- Just the, the, the comment within that policy, Section D, talks about neutral and positive long-term impact financially, but it also has a comment around community and environment, and how the two either have to outweigh one or the other, or have some sort of balance. I'm not sure who decided that the benefit of the county and village will outweigh that of the community and the environment of this project. Maybe there's some more analysis or some more information that could be shared around that. So, what are the basis around that to kind of deem this requirement satisfied? I have questions around that. If it's strictly tax-based, I would, I would kind of welcome the, the conversation to go beyond that. The cost of our enjoyment of the properties, the cost of the property values with an apartment complex literally hovering, hovering over our street to the tune of the highest point within the area, permanent loss of agricultural land that will never get a chance to get reused as agricultural land. We all saw it today that it is, it is, it is cleared. Agricultural land is key, it's important, and any opportunity for future use of agricultural land, I think, is a loss for, for, for many reasons, some personal. So, once that's gone, it's gone. That's unfortunate. So, the cost of those things, as well as I, I wonder about environmentally, you know, there's no sidewalks, right? And, and although we are considered connected to the center growth, which has a strategy around having sidewalks so that people can pedestrian and efficiently walk to the center, we are on the fringe, and we're being treated as the fringe, and rightfully so, because that's where we're at. That's why there's no sidewalks. So, you're going to throw up an apartment complex with nowhere for people to walk. There's not going to be a bus route or a transit route coming up Steeple View, I hope not. So, environmentally, people have to drive, people have to go in their cars. So, there's an environmental and there's a community impact to that Section D that I would ask for reconsideration with, with the committee. Around Section F, this is the, the same, the same policy. Section F results in public infrastructure that is efficient to service and maintain. Comment from the committee was, "There is no reason to believe that, given the proposed residential densities, that the system would be designed in such a way as to be inefficient to service, since the total number of possible ratepayers is limited." Saying no reason to believe, I, I think raises concerns for me. I think I need a little bit more than that, given the fact that you guys would be aware that there is a two-hundred-unit proposal off of Belcher Street that is also in our small village, that I believe there was an appeal process that went to the utility board in December, waiting that, that result, probably coming sometime in the spring. That is important to note here in that two-hundred-plus units plus our development proposal that we're talking about here today increases the population of Fort Williams by seven-hundred people, currently a thousand, seventy percent, seventy percent increase. We can't look at these proposals as silos, they can't be looked at in isolation. We can't go, here's a development proposal by SAG on Steeple View, and it caught Aaron's eye, I, I, I get it. It's the king of the hill, it's up there, it's a beautiful spot, great view, that's why we built there, that's why I'm there, that's why my family's there. We can't look at these in isolations and say, everything around it can sustain it. This project's great, we did a study. This project's great, we did a study. This project's great, we did a study. We need to take a step back in this village, and having two proposals about ready to get approved that takes it from a thousand to seven-hundred, over seven-hundred additional residents is egregious, it's aggressive, and it's ruthless, and I'm requesting a step back and a holistic review of what the real plan is here, what the real strategy is here. Because I don't want a long lineup at the noodle guy. There already is a long lineup, and if there's too many people in Fort Williams, it's going to be an issue for me. So, that is that on F. I've got concerns around H, so that is still within three-point-one-point-one-three-H. This is regarding features and drainage, brought up by a lot of folks today, I won't beat this one down. Committee just simply said, "Staff are not aware of any sensitive features to the subject property." The subject property includes Steeple View, because this is being added to Steeple View. So, the subject property has major issues. How are the staff not aware of any sensitive features? That, that shocked me, that shocked me. You know, and it says that they will, they will submit a drainage plan, which I, I think I heard today, maybe they are going to submit a drainage plan, I certainly hope they do, but the whole drainage issue has been brought up quite a bit in this, in this meeting, so I won't, I won't belabor it, but as a resident, I've been very sensitive to it, living on Steeple View, through our major drainage issues, and I did point out the, the fact that I had been reaching out to the, to the county, you know, looking for some engineering feedback and, and knowledge. Nice to hear somebody did come out and, and walk the street, that's encouraging to hear that. There's been a lot of talk about, about the bus stop. This is, this is the bus stop yesterday morning, so this is the ice buildup at the bottom of the street. We have kids, literally, I should have gotten a picture of them, it'd be a little weird taking pictures of kids getting on the bus, but they were, they were standing on the ice with the bus, with cars trying to stop behind them. So, a little bit of snow coverage, and guess what happens? You're right out on Collins Road. And it's not just a catch basin issue, there is muck and mud and rock and waters from one end of this street to the other. And putting an apartment building, shaking up the vegetation, loosening the soil at the top of the hill is going to make this worse. The developers that have been in this area have changed the slope, they've changed the drainage, they've messed up the entire natural flow of that land on that hill, and it's getting worse, and it's getting worse. And also, a fantastic point made by somebody here in the room who mentioned the point about the parking lot at the top of the hill that will collect snow, and here comes all the sediment and salt and whatnot running down the hill. I hadn't thought of that, but that was also a great point. Around, I believe it is I, but it could be J, so just the way, the way it's kind of written here, I did just take a screenshot from the website, so it looks like maybe it might be a J or an I. This is just regarding open space. This is more of just a question for me, because the comments from committee was, this requirement was met through the development agreement on properties fronting Steeple View and fronting Lee Side Court. I just have questions as to what exactly that means. Are we talking about the trail system? This is a question, maybe I'll direct the question to you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, and I'll bob it back to staff, because I know staff have plenty of experience in the open space policy and how it applies to this general area, so.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Well, it just says just around J or I, it's regarding open spaces, just the comment from the committee that this requirement has been met around the ten percent contribution as there is, the previous development agreement has, has this captured under properties fronting Steeple View Drive and fronting Lee Side Court. So, are we, are we talking about open spaces from a previous developer from a different time? And where exactly are those open spaces?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Speaker. So, it says a ten percent open space contribution. Typically, that's accepted either as land or as cash. In this case, it was accepted as land, so in part, it is prob, it is not probably, it is the trail system within that existing development, developed under a different developer. I do understand there, there maybe was a, a park parcel dedicated as well. I'm getting a nod from Ms. Javrec, she was here when that was approved, I wasn't. So, I don't have a whole lot of history on it, but on the basis of the ruling of the development officer, who is the jurisdiction in this regard, the ten percent requirement was met under the original development agreement as a ten percent of the lot area, of the total lot area, which included this subject property.
So, we're, we're referring to the trail?
And a park parcel.
And a park parcel.
Part, so there's a, there's a vacant lot, that there's going to be a park? Sorry, I don't know if I'm allowed to look at her, or just keep my eyes on you.
As long as you're looking at me, just, yeah, Ms. Moser's just doing her job, and, and we're just trying to, you know, create a buffer, because we're the ones that are accountable for the policies that she's, of course, trying to enforce to the best of staff's ability, but yeah.
They developed, they, they, they donated a parcel of land to be made into a park that is currently there somewhere.
Uh, yeah. Ms. Javrec, can you clarify if it's what the rules?
Fronting on Steeple View and fronting on Lee Side Court, as it's, as it states in the committee comments.
I'm looking, we got Ms. Javrec over here, too, that may have some history on the topic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Off the top of my head, it's one of the parcels that would be to the south of Lee Side.
Perhaps, if we could see what we're referring to.
We probably don't have a map of that specific parcel, because it wasn't contained as part of this specific presentation, but there is a map somewhere with the open space parcel on it, would have been contained in the first development agreement.
So, that open space is, is not part of this development. It's in another section that's not currently visible on the map?
Through you, Madam Chair, just to clarify, the dedication was done through the previous development agreement process. The developer at that time owned this parcel, the subject parcel in question, so the calculation included this parcel when we were looking at what constitutes ten percent.
So, we are considering the ten percent requirement is met as the previous developer in an area somewheres on a map that we cannot see in this proposal was donated at some point. I'll just, I'll just leave that on, on the record, so for that reason, I'm challenging J as not meeting the requirement. K states utilizes alternate road. Committee comment, this criteria is not applicable to this proposal. That seems pretty, pretty quick answered with, with seven words. This project includes a new road off Collins. It's, it's in the, it's in the drawing that, that we can see. That is a second road, which I think by definition is, is an alternate road. The alternate road is in the plan, and we are being asked for this to be considered, and the county should satisfy this requirement as presented. So, the statement of this is not applicable to this proposal is quite the opposite. It is very much applicable, and it is in contention, as you guys heard today. So, K, under that policy, is absolutely not satisfied, because an alternate road is actually in the drawing. L, this is just regarding sufficient pedestrian transportation, very similar to G, right? Committee comment around whether or not this provides sufficient pedestrian transportation was, as there are no sidewalks in the vicinity of the subject site, staff are not requiring sidewalks along new public roads associated with, with this development. However, a walking trail will be provided for future connection. In my opinion, this requirement is not met. This does not provide sufficient linkages. Trails through the woods to get to sidewalks located elsewhere is not sufficient or safe or reasonable. Not, somebody mentioned strollers, not for strollers, not for the elderly, not in the winter. I've seen, I've seen tractor equipment going down those trails, I've seen four-wheelers. It is not a safe and sufficient pedestrian means of transportation going from point A to point B. There's no way that requirement is met within this. Sidewalks follow the roadway, and they provide a means for people to transport from place to place in an efficient and as it asks, a sufficient manner. Trails through the woods do not do that. I don't need new trails. I need a safe, and I need a quiet neighborhood. Section M, around complements existing development. So, it reads as complements existing and planned development within an adjacent town or village in location and design. The committee comment around this one was, the proposal is consistent with the development in the surrounding area. The lands to the south, so now we're talking a different street, and this is why it's complementing, on a different street, south of the subject property comprising of Lee Side Court, and they also include Steeple View Drive in that comment, were also the subject of a comprehensive neighborhood development agreement, and as a result, there is a mix of housing types. This development requirement around M, in my opinion, is not met either. It is one hundred percent not consistent with the existing development, or what was even given permission to develop on Steeple View. In the final approved plan, which was signed on December fifth, two thousand and thirteen, the agreement the county entered with the developer at that time, New Valley Homes, they did agree to a comprehensive plan that was approved, and it also included multi-differences and multi-level of, types of housing. Apartment was included within that. There were some garden homes, and there were some row houses, and I believe some, some townhomes as well, which exist on Lee Side. On the agreement as signed, there is a giant X over Steeple View, and it was labeled as Group X, with lines drawing up the street and lines drawing down the street. In the legend, Group X reads as for large, single homes only. That's where I built, that's the plan that I bought. Lee Side was given four different types, never for our street. You can't look past Steeple View until you find a street that was given permission to build an apartment and deem this requires, this requirement satisfied as a result. We talk about impact zone or, or within five hundred feet of projects, the closest house drawing a straight line from the top of this hill where this, this unit is going, the closest line, straight line through backyards to the house on Lee Side is eight hundred and thirty feet. The closest house to Port's Landing, from the same point of where this apartment building is going, is seven hundred and seventy feet. So, I ask, is this project consistent with Port's Landing? Because that's closer than Lee Side, which was used to deem M satisfied, which, if we reference the original agreement of two thousand and thirteen, Steeple View was never part of that plan in terms of what types of housings was, was to be built. Regarding MPS objectives within three-point-one, so I think this is the section around infrastructure, I believe. The proposed development includes a, a mix of residential uses within a growth center at a density that will enable the village to provide services efficiently. That was the comment from the committee. So, infrastructure's fine, this development will not have an impact to that. Again, I'm just going to call out my previous comment around that being a big assumption, just given the fact that in isolation, that could be true. However, on the collective, if the two-hundred-unit Belcher Street project gets approved, then there needs to be a collective understanding of what three-point-one means in order to say that that is indeed true, and I'm talking about the efficiency. Regarding MPS five-point-three-point-seven, so this is that traffic study that everybody is, is also bringing up as well. That reads as consider the impact of a proposal on the road network services, development pattern, environment, finances, and well-wills. Committee comments around that, it is compatible with the surrounding development pattern, and the applicant had, the applicant had a traffic impact study prepared to the satisfaction. This is not compatible with the surrounding development at all, as I stated previously on, on my, on my last issue, not to the original plan and not to what exists today on our street. Also, there needs to be an independent study. I don't know if that's normal practice, maybe council can, can correct me on that, if, if it is normal practice for the applicant to submit their own traffic study to say there's no traffic issues. Given this project and the other one currently under review, I don't know if applicants submitting studies to gain access to approvals on requirements is, is the way to go, so I, I would request or suggest that five-point-three-point-seven is not, is not deemed achieved, and I'm not sure I'm going to even read a, a traffic study done by the applicant looking for approval. Around MPS five-point-three-point-seven, this is around Section F. This is kind of like the, the, the high in the core, low on the, low on the fringe strategy, so the comment, which we're, we're not, we're not outsider, we're on the fringe, the fringe is us, this is where this development is, it's not in the core, it's on the fringe. The comment with the committee around this one was, since this development is considered low-density, staff are not of the opinion that this policy has not been met. I'm not sure whether, I'm, I'm referring to the three apartment buildings and, and a multitude of, of folks moving into one, into one unit, I think fifty-something-foot structure with three-year- with three or four dozen people living in it. I, I wouldn't consider that low density. So I'm, I might, maybe that was a quick error on how that policy was reviewed, but I would challenge F as not being met simply for the fact that they considered it. However, this is low density. So literally it says low density, I'm not changing the words. Staff are on the opinion that this is met, I would challenge that. Around, there's, there's one particular policy as well that around, it's located in section bylaw 105 that I would like submitted for review or discussed today, actually for more clarity and for the simple reason that it was not included in the, in the proposal reviews to ensure that requirements were being met. And it is section 1, 3.1.10. And in particular, I'm looking at sections B and C within that. Section B reads that, actually I'll read the top part for those in the room since it, it wasn't included here today. 3.1.10 reads, consider, council should consider only development agreement proposals that include high-density residential developments if the following are met and satisfied. B reads, access to the proposal for a high-density development does not go through any low-density neighborhood.
So I think, and I'll just, just to clarify, this isn't a development agreement and that's likely, I'll look to Ms. Moser for confirmation, but this isn't a development agreement. It's zoned R5, which is a bit different than the policy which would address a development agreement. So it used to be a development agreement, which where that language comes in, development agreement was discharged. It's now zoned R5, which is comprehensive community development. So the policies that would apply are under that section of the MPS and not the development agreement section. Am I correct in saying that, Ms. Moser? Well, no, I'm getting corrected, so we'll see what she has to say.
I'm going to step back to two spots. Well, no, actually, I'll address your question first. This is a development agreement. All, all development in R5 goes by development agreement. These lands, while they were identified in the development agreement to the south, there was no permissions associated with them. It was just labeled future development, future development agreement. So this is, this is the future development agreement indicated on that map. With regard to policy 3.1.10, that doesn't apply because again, this is, this is not a high-density development. And I'll explain what I mean by that. So density is a mathematical relationship and simply put, it's how much stuff can you put within a given area? In this case, those two things are how many residential units on the whole of the property because we, the policy speaks to the whole development, not any one lot within the development. So the whole development consists of 16 acres. Within that 16 acres, we see 178 units. Specifically with regard to the four-story apartment building that the speaker referenced, we see 32 units on a five-acre parcel. So that's, and Scott can check my math on this, but that is just over six units per acre. Our R1 zone, I really hesitate to say this number, our R1 zone currently permits up to 30 units per acre. So that is our lowest density residential zone within growth centers. It permits 30 acres, 30 units per acre as of right without any kind of planning process approved by council. This development has under 10 units per acre and so it, under no consideration, could it be considered high-density? And that's why policy 3.1.10 does not apply.
Thank you, Ms. Moser.
Okay. So I'll just read what's written in, in the statement above why, why this policy was created. Doesn't references holistic developments as a whole using math. It just simply states, the county recognizes that apartment buildings can have a significant impact on the surrounding neighborhood from increased traffic into the visual impacts. So therefore, the following policy 3.1.10 was written. I'm talking about not a holistic development plan here. I'm talking about a unit that I have concern with and that is the apartment building. It will go through a low-density as designated, as planned, as marked off as section X on the original document. It will flow through our low-density neighborhood into the high. And, and also section C within that talks about the need for appropriate transition between high and low, the need for appropriate transition. So if we're going to look at the collective across acres to justify an apartment complex where we feel it does not belong, we can hopefully at least agree on the need for appropriate transition. We are dealing with no transition if this plan goes through as proposed. We're not talking about high-density to low in the next village, town, street, literally lots that touch each other. There's a gentleman here who has a lot that is going to sit 20 feet below the base of this building. If it's 50 feet high, this is going to go from a high-density 70-foot drop down to this gentleman's backyard that is touching this lot, not a street away, touching his lot. He's going to be looking up at a 70-foot structure. That is not an appropriate transition from high to low, not by any means. And hey, I get it. I get why Erin and the team want to have this spot. Like I said, it's the king of the hill, it's at the top. There is no other point that is higher in that area. I'd want to be there too. That's why I am. I have a concern and a question also. Sorry, this was around, around phase two. And this, the, the whole phase two thing, I think, was, was mentioned in October, October 12th, which I think you captured that. I just wanted to make sure that that was captured. One thing I did want to point out was, in saying what I just said, I took a look at the proposal for the 200-unit complex in, on Belcher Street. And there was a PAC meeting that was on May 9th regarding this development. And the staff were very excited about it because, and they were all in an opinion, that based on the visual screening that was provided by the site characteristics, including the existing trees and vegetation and the site's topography, which is the lowest point in the area, they said that there will be very little visual impact of this higher density within the neighborhood. So that's a very interesting point that the planning committee sought fit to take a, an apartment complex behind a school that is adjacent to single-dwelling homes and a farm and, and, and work the, I guess, fit into the strategy by highlighting the fact that due to the trees and the low topography and the vegetation around it, it will have no visible impact. So they were very excited about that, about that part. So I know why this is left out of this proposal. There is not a single tree. There is no vegetation. There is nothing but loose soil waiting to come down the hill. It's going to be ungodly. It's going to be unsightly and it's at the very top of a hill. I think there's another reason why we saw lots of aerial pictures today and, and not a view from folks' backyards and not a view from Steeple View of how this structure is going to look. I understand why there was, there was aerial shots shown today and not anything else. So I guess I would just ask that this section of the strategy, if it was deemed fit to comment by the committee members on May 9th regarding the, the Belcher Street on its visual effects and impact, that needs to be considered in this proposal as well. And I'd like to hear their comments on the visual impact of this particular project. That was, that was a question, Emily, sorry.
Sure, yeah. Through, through to Ms. Moser, do you have any comment on that particular aspect?
On the visual impact of the proposed building?
And I think what Mr. McPherson is suggesting is why it was considered in the, in one development in the, the area, the village versus another.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the speaker. I, I would disagree with his categorization that staff were really excited about the visual screening. That's just pointing out a characteristic of the site that may make the development more favorable to the folks around it. In this situation, a four-story apartment building, given a four-story apartment building is permitted on Lee Side, it was not considered that a significant visual impact was going to occur. The, the building is proposed to be set relatively centrally within that five-acre parcel. So there would be some significant distances between the proposed building and the lots surrounding it. So given that, given the significant size of the parcel for that use, staff did not believe there was any mitigation required from a visual standpoint.
Thank you, Ms. Moser.
Yeah, and I'll just say that they, they saw fit to, to comment enough in the meetings and have it captured that it felt to me like it was probably important enough. Likely a lot of things get discussed and, and tossed around and, and that one was actually noted with great length. And they went on to say, although this does not quite fit the growth center fringe, we're talking about the Belcher Street project, given the fact that it is on the fringe and not at the core. And while this high-density project is located adjacent to lower density, maybe they weren't excited, but they were under the opinion that based on the vegetation and the low topography, that there was very little visual impact. Again, I ask, is there a way for us to see what this structure will look like from Steeple View? If we could request drawings, I, I think there, there must be more drawings done from the street or from different angles to sort of show the visual impact without vegetation. Oh, and by the way, it was brought up in the, in the, the 2022 meeting. I don't think it was captured on the list, but somebody did ask the question about the requirement for, for trees to be planted. And the, the committee or the comment was made that there's, there's no trees existing, so we won't require any trees to be placed. Every single lot put there by New Valley Homes has two, two trees on it, mine included. I get it, this was old farmland, so there's no trees. So why put some? There's no sidewalks, so why bother? Right?
How, just, we technically have a 10-minute time limit. Obviously, I'm being very generous.
I'm very, I'm very sorry.
This evening and it's, it's fine. I just, I don't want to get in, I'm going to get in trouble here. I'm trying not to look on either side of me as the chair of the meeting. So if I could just, if we could move it along a little, like just because we're pushing like a lot further than I would generally allow. And I don't really want to have to allow the same length of time for everyone else who's here tonight in case they have a similar-sized presentation. But we do obviously want to hear from everyone. The important, like it's important that we hear everyone's concerns. So I just want to encourage a little speed.
Hopefully, I, yeah, no, I, that's absolutely fair. I only have eight more pages to go. I'm just kidding. Just have one, one more comment to make and then I'll kind of wrap up. And very minor, it was just under the secondary plan, 4.5.24. I don't know if this is a request for information, there's been a couple of those today, but it just reads simply to the fact, and this is under J also, developers shall prepare groundwater study for proposals located within wellfield zones A and B. I believe this is B. It doesn't state anywhere as where only if there's deemed risk. It just simply says they shall prepare groundwater and there's no stipulations as to when that should happen or not happen. So I'm requesting that be done as well. So just, I won't take up any more time. I just, hopefully I've, I feel in my mind anyway, if I've, I've listed out some policies that I have questions against, hopefully council has some questions within that as well as to where some of these requirements were deemed met. I challenged a number of them today and I encourage everybody to take those into consideration and, and come back with a, with a proper result that we're looking for here today.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, person. Glenn Dyke, again, 68 Steeple View Drive. I just, I'm requesting two clarifications. The first one, if Phase Two does not proceed, then that sort of confirms 100% of all the new traffic will proceed down Steeple View Drive. Is that it?
That's, that is my understanding, based on the presentations to me.
Thank you. The second point I'm looking to clarify is understanding that Phase Two is potentially contingent upon a further approval of rezoning. And the argument being it isn't economically feasible to develop one side of the road. If one side of that road currently can consist between 77 and 88 residential units, in accordance with the document, does that then lead to an additional 77 to 88 units on that same street? And how does that roll into your density numbers?
Okay. That's a good question. I'd look to staff to, is that, is there the ability to reconfigure the Phase Two dwellings into the Phase One land area proposal?
To you, Madam Chair, that would require a non-substantive amendment to the agreement. So it couldn't happen without an additional process.
Okay. Couldn't happen without additional process, which would involve some public, like announcement of some kind or similar to this?
Requires public notification. It does not necessarily require a public hearing.
Okay. Okay, okay, yes. Microphones on?
My apologies. The development agreement stipulates the, the area within which certain uses occur and those areas are developed to the standards of the land use bylaw. So that, that would be the restriction there on those areas of land in terms of the total number of units. You couldn't just take all the units from Phase Two and funnel them into Phase One without, without a sig, that would actually require a, a full public process with a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anything that could be allowed would be allowed under the, the current land use bylaw rules?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Anything further? Yep, come on up. And we do, the applicant is here too and, and they may wish to come forward and address some of the things they've heard this evening. We've all heard, hi.
Hello, I live at 29 Steeple View. My name's Darcy McPherson.
Darcy McPherson?
Yeah.
Yeah, just got to speak up a little bit, sorry.
Sorry.
It's just, we hear things so totally different than how you hear them. I can't explain it, it's just the way it is.
That's okay. I just wanted to make point that no one's really seemed to say right now, it's the infrastructure of Port Williams. No one has brought up, do we have enough policing? Is there enough firefighting things around to protect us? Like no one has actually said anything that's reasonable in this, in my opinion. I hope you guys agree with me. Have we checked? Do we have like EMS, is that what it's called, the ambulance service? Do we have enough to cover all the growth that's being happening? And services, no one here has mentioned anything even about internet. Our internet on our street right now is terrible. Imagine adding 200 some-odd people, how much worse is it going to get? We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have proper roads. People talk about roads, but we have only a couple ways in and out. We have the 358, we have Belcher, right? That's it. Collins, Stars Point, that's it. In and out, we have no streetlights. To me, it's impossible to add all this traffic without adding infrastructure and that should be done first before anything else. And I know it's about money and revenue. We're not saying we're against building and growth, but the infrastructure right now is not there. And I just want the council to think about that when they're deciding this. And what's appropriate, it's a very small village. It's a small village for a reason, but it's a small village. So we have to take precautions. And I specifically worry about our children. We do have lots of children on the street. And as I said, do we have enough of all these essential services to provide care for what they're asking? Because as has been said, the town wants to grow the town by 70%. That's undoable to me. Like I don't see that happening. But I just want everyone to consider that when they're thinking about it. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. My name is Alex Mador and I live at 62 Steeple View Drive. If possible, could we get the map up? And I'll just preface this by saying, we purchased the lot in the middle of, what are we now, 2024, 2022? um, what are we now, 2024, 2022? And, uh, eventually moved in on July 1st, 2023. Coming from out of province, I was shocked, um, at, when I asked my developer about, uh, the flood plan restrictions, uh, for the individual lot, and he said, "That's not really a thing here." Um, so we went along, we actually ended up cutting the lot. So if you look at where the apartment building is going to be, um, I'm probably the one where that black line comes down, I'm probably not the one it comes down on, I'm probably the next one on the left, so that's probably my lot right there. Um, that black line is pretty much a line of, uh, trees that have, I'm assuming, been that, put there by the, uh, original owner of the whole land, and there's a bit of a swale cut in, um, to sort of follow that. So there's a lot of water that comes off there. Um, originally, um, we, we, we cut the lot because we didn't want to do, uh, I didn't want to walk in and then have to go up the stairs to get to my main floor, so we, we built on a slab instead. Um, and that resulted in a lot of, um, drainage issues which have been, you know, hammered here tonight. Um, eventually, I decided to put in a retaining wall, um, cost me thousands of dollars, it wasn't in the original plan, and the reason for that is because my lot was disappearing every time it rained. Um, you could see the trenches on the back, and it was ending up in the road. So I didn't want to, um, make my neighbors upset, you could see it in the road, um, so I did that, but I also didn't want to lose my lot. Um, we don't have grass in yet, but I can't help but think, sodding, putting grass in, um, you know, this upcoming summer is on my mind. If, if we've got a huge stack of snow from a driveway and it's got salt and, uh, whatever else in it, and it melts, what's that gonna do to my backyard? I bet you whatever money I put into it, I bet you my grass isn't gonna be very green. Um, not only that, but when, once they start clearing the vegetation on top, um, that ground's gonna let go. I bet you my retaining wall would disappear within, um, a couple years. You know, obviously the development wouldn't take that long to do, but, uh, my retaining wall would be, uh, covered in, in dirt. Um, furthermore, I have, um, I, I, I actually didn't get a notification for this, this meeting. I found out through a Facebook group, uh, from my neighbors. Um, I also have two children under two, one of which is five weeks old, so I can't say that I'm very prepared for this today.
You're forgiven.
Um, so I apologize for that, but the thought, um, and I, I'm probably thinking that I was the individual that, um, Mr. McPherson referred to. Um, so yes, there, from, from where I'm standing on my backyard to the top of my lot, it's probably about 10 feet, and if that apartment building, I'm, I'm gonna bet I could probably throw a rock from my backyard and, and, and hit somewhere on it, is, uh, 40 or 50 feet high, um, that's pretty daunting, and, um, you know, that would take me 30 years of, of growing trees to, to offer any degree of privacy to, um, my kids. Um, ultimately, what it comes down to for me, and it's not about fighting policy numbers or all that, because I, I'm just, I'm unprepared, um, but I think it's important to remember the human element here. Um, there is a serious, serious safety issue. Um, as was mentioned, with, you know, just a couple of new builds happening, ourselves included, it creates a lot of congestion on the road. Um, you know, it could be simple as, uh, an excavator being unloaded. Uh, there's some mornings, you, you gotta wait five, 10, 15 minutes till the construction crews wake up, and that's with, you know, 20 houses on there. Um, so that's, that's not gonna get any better. Um, my kids obviously are not going to school yet, um, but, uh, you know, that, that's a serious concern. Um, I don't know what the photo was that Mr. McPherson showed, but, um, you could literally skate, y, y, you could have a small game of shini at the end of our road, um, two, three days ago, um, if you wanted to. And, uh, so, so, so obviously, you know, the draining is an issue. Um, there's concerns with the development and how that's going to affect my backyard personally, and ultimately, just being completely unaware and, and caught off-guard by all of this, and, and maybe that's part of, um, my lack of fact-finding, um, prior to, you know, making this life decision and establishing my family here and on Steeple View Road. If I would know today what I, or if I would have known then what I know today with all of this, I'm not sure we would have chosen that lot. Um, then, I, I can speak to the neighbors that I've gotten to know, and, um, they're a pretty good group of people. Um, we just want, you know, the best for our community. I don't think everyone is, or most of us are saying, "No, this can't go," but it's pretty clear that there's some, um, ulterior agendas in terms of, you know, whether or not Phase Two will even move forward. And at the end of the day, I think the biggest concern is that all of that traffic flow for, um, you know, 100-plus units is coming in and out of our road. Um, I don't think the road is big enough right now to put sidewalks on both sides of the street and, you know, sustain any more, uh, traffic. Um, it's just not built for that. The paths, I'm, I'm a runner, um, it's pretty dark this time of year if you run at night. Uh, none of the paths are lit. Um, there's some serious, uh, once again, comes down to drainage, that path that connects Steeple View to, um, the park and Highway 358, uh, half the time it's washed out. Um, so you're certainly looking at, uh, I don't know how the liability works on that, but, uh, I have to run with a light on, um, and, and I would say you'd probably have to walk with a light on, um, you know, anytime past 5 o'clock, especially in the winter. Um, so I apologize for not, I guess, bringing more, uh, fact-based stuff, but I guess this is just more of a, you know, thinking about the human element, and, uh, I also apologize for how long you guys have had to be up here and listen to all of our concerns, but I think the strength in our representation here shows that, um, you know, we're united on, on some fronts here. So please do take that into consideration, and I would like to, um, thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you. And actually, this is early, so you're...
Oh, okay. Never been to one of these.
We've, we've been here a long time sometimes. We've, we're comfy in these seats.
Um, not sure how to formally address, but I just wanted to come up...
Just your name and address, sorry.
Oh, Susan Hamilton. Uh, we live down on Lee Side, we're renting, and we're, tomorrow, we're supposed to put a deposit on the lot right next to that street that's going up to the apartment building. And I'm very seriously reconsidering. Um, I do not want to put myself or my husband in the position that these people are in. I walk my dog along Collins Road. Uh, we sold our house two years ago, we were renting to see, you know, what our next steps would be, um, in the next phase of our life, and, uh, we really wanted to build up on Steeple View. Um, I've met a lot of people from there, we were excited about it, and now, you know, I've, I've noticed the washouts and the, and the ice at the end of that road, it's, it's unbelievable, and seeing the kids standing there at the end of that road waiting for the bus, it just, it's unbelievable. You know, like, it's just, uh, they're slipping and sliding on the ice. It's, it's not acceptable. Um, and if, and I agree, if you have a car coming down to the end of that road and it's bus time and they can't stop, there's gonna be something that happens. Um, so I just wanted to share that, you know, tomorrow's our deposit day for that lot, we have our house plan picked out, um, and I'm very seriously thinking of pulling out because of all this. So I hope that you guys, um, really consider these, the feelings of, of everyone and the facts here, um, and I just, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Anyone else wish to speak this evening? At this point, then, the, yeah, you're, the applicants are welcome to, to come on up and, uh, say a few words.
Hi, my name is Bruce McLeod, 1468 Stars Point Road, and this is Aaron Uer, so if it's all right, we're gonna tag-team. Aaron has been our developer, so Aaron's from Halifax and is, does this for a living, and has been negotiating with Ms. Moser here for the last two years our application has been in process, so I hope we can move forward. Uh, so he's gonna speak to the technical parts, and then maybe if I could add something after, and I'll try to fill in any gaps.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
Yeah, I just wanted to address, uh, two of the main concerns that I heard tonight. First was just in reference to Phase Two and the timeline and whether or not it will even proceed, and, uh, that will be market-driven. As Laura pointed out, a single-sided road is a very tricky road to develop. Um, it's not economically feasible currently, but again, it will be market-driven, um, and will be addressed in the future. I know that's, that's, uh, probably not exactly the phrase that, uh, those with us tonight wanted to hear, but, um, that's the reality of the situation. Um, but with respect to Road B, um, to address another main concern, it's the developer's intention to develop, uh, a temporary road base for that during construction to alleviate any, uh, construction vehicles that would be on Steeple View. Um, the developers doing everything they can to work with the, with the neighbors on that. Um, and then the second main concern was drainage. So it sounds like there's some, some issues currently, uh, on Steeple View Drive, and, uh, it sounds like the municipality is aware and is, and is, uh, working to alleviate some of those. That's actually really good information for our engineer to have, um, as they prepare a, a full drainage plan. As, as you know, um, we're mandated to ensure that drainage is well taken care of and, uh, doesn't negatively affect anybody around us, so a full plan will be developed and then reviewed by, um, your own engineer. So just wanted to address those, those, uh, main concerns that I heard tonight.
And just further, and, and why we're not starting with the, the second, the second plan, is the water and sewer comes up to the end of Steeple View, so it makes sense to continue that on. We can't start at the top with no sewer up there. So the infrastructure will have to be built up to Phase Two, and I think Phase Two will go ahead, because there is a need for housing, it may be more expensive. We have not put in our proposal to rezone the A1 land. We recognize how difficult this has been over two years, without throwing that in the mix. If council at some point in the future said, "It really makes no sense to have a thin strip of 10 acres of A1 land, and you, we'll make it residential," as it was originally designed some years ago, then that road would get built, I'm sure, a lot quicker, so. And again, we've been negotiating with, very closely with the municipality for two years, and almost everything in that plan, you have demanded of us. You have demanded multi-unit dwellings, because that's part of your plan. You have demanded small homes that are affordable, so this is an area where we can get affordable housing and some of those so-called smaller garden homes. So the density, we submitted our original plan, was a smaller density, and you actually asked for slightly higher density. I think it makes sense, if there's only so many places to build, then, then it makes sense to have more of a density. So really, the density, the multiple different homes, has been your requirement of us. And just how this all started, um, so I'm a physician in the emergency room, for those that may recognize me, I'm sorry, because that's probably not a good thing on your behalf, but every day I go to work and there are people sitting in hallways, so my vision here, when this all started, was to create a seniors' co-housing complex, where we all live together, we look after one another, and we do not end up in emergency. I will not be on a stretcher in my own hallway, uh, at the hospital. So why a multi-unit dwelling? It's because we want indoor access to all our common spaces, you know? We originally, we designed multiple homes, but we don't have to go outside as we age in our 60s, 70s, and 80s. So it really started off with that. I think the concept of a seniors' co-housing, we hope to be a model for other places in the province, so. So it sounds like Steeple View, the residents, they put a lot of things forward that you guys should consider, because it sounds like their road is awful now, you should fix it. It sounds like the, the, uh, the traffic is bad, but we spent $4,500 on a traffic study, I hope, and, and it wasn't a neighbor that we hired, in fact, I understand it was the same person that submitted the traffic study for Steeple View. So he was an approved vendor, so he's someone that you suggested to us. So I'd hope a traffic study that we paid $4,000-plus dollars for is somewhat more objective, and I understand the emotion behind the extra traffic, but, uh, it seemed to conclude that there would not be a substantial difference. And, uh, yes, so a road into the highway, that sounds brilliant. The trail system, it's not that good right now, but maybe, once we get that density, this trail system will be fantastic. In fact, we would love a trail system as we age to, to exercise on, and it needs to be safe. So hopefully, all these things that are bad now, in fact, the water drainage, maybe our engineers will improve the water drainage for Steeple View, once we get going, so. I think that's all I had to say, unless there are any questions for me, so.
Any questions, the applicant from council? Okay. Any further comments from council at this point? All right. I think we've come to the end, um, so at this point, um, I'll declare the public hearing adjourned, and we will move into municipal council. And I have a, a request for a recess, so we'll take another 10-minute recess. Thanks, Councilor Armstrong, for raising that. Over there. You thought this was going to be a nice, short meeting. You let me know when we're ready to go. Peter, can you hear us? And can you, can we hear you? Oh, he says yes.
Yes, I can hear you, thanks. I had my sound off.
Great. I'm glad to know you're with us. All right. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Municipality of the County of Kings. This is a special municipal council held on Thursday, January 11, 2024, following a public hearing. The time is 9:52 PM. And at this point, we'll begin our meeting by taking roll call. I'm Deputy Mayor Emily Lutz, who's filling in this evening as chair for Mayor Mertart, who is joining us virtually. Hello, Mayor Mertart.
Good evening.
Okay, so all of council is present this evening. We have an agenda that's been circulated at this point in the meeting. I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated, moved by Councilor Burgess, seconded by Councilor Allen. Thank you so much. Any additions or deletions, comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. For those who are new to council this evening. Oh, Mayor Mertart, do you vote in favor?
I do, thanks.
Thank you. For those new to council this evening, we do vote on electronic voting pads. There's a 10-minute delay between which the question is called for the motion and by which we register our votes on the pin pad, and then it is displayed on the screen. Mayor Mertart will be voting orally tonight and will indicate his vote as we're pressing our buttons. The agenda is approved unanimously. Does anyone, does anyone need to declare conflict of interest this evening with any of the agenda items?
I'm chair.
Yes, Mayor Mertart.
It's not a conflict of interest, but I did want to say at the outset that I had trouble connecting in the first instance, so I was not present for the first two items on the public hearing agenda. So I will not be voting on either of those items.
Okay, thank you so much for letting us know. And for your information, I don't believe there was any public comment on either of those two issues, just so you're aware. So it was just the two presentations. But thank you for letting us know, and I will not await your vote on that. And I see no conflict of interest issues on any items. Perfect. Moving on to item four, Planning Advisory Committee Recommendations of November 14, 2023. Of course, those have been two subsequent meetings since that time, but they originate from the Planning Advisory Committee meeting of November 14. Our first item is the application to amend the Grand Prairie Conservation District filed 23-14. Councilor Armstrong, did you wish to read the recommendations this evening?
I'll give you a short break.
Oh, thank you so much. Go ahead.
That municipal council gives second reading to the application to amend the Grand Prairie Conservation District map by removing a property at 2176 Grand Prairie Road, PID 55231438 Grand Prairie, as described in Appendix D of the report dated November 14, 2023. I so move.
Do we have a second for the motion? Councilor Granger, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, I'm not voting on that.
It's okay. We're not going to register it, but I thought I'd thank you. It's late in the evening. Councilor Armstrong.
I've just got to wait for him to put it out.
Oh, I have them.
My system's going through an update here. Thank you. Rob tried to give me one, I told him no. Okay, now he puts it up. Okay.
That municipal council gives second reading to the application to rezone 5431 Highway 1, PID 55159180 Waterville, from the residential mixed-density R3 zone to the mixed-commercial residential C3 zone as described in Appendix D of the report dated November 14, 2023. I so move.
Is there a second for the motion? Seconded by Councilor Davison, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. And just for additional context, not a majority, but almost half of members of council sit on PAC. These items do come to our committee of the whole meetings in general. So this certainly is not the first time we see these. So if you're concerned by lack of debate, please know that we've heard, we've had ample time to ask questions of staff. And sometimes I feel like the perception can be, oh, they just, you know, they're not even talking about them. However, we have talked about them extensively, and you can hear recordings of other meetings, et cetera, where these items have been, have come forward. Councilor Armstrong, back to you after my diversion. Apologies.
That municipal council gives second reading to the application to rezone a portion of the property located at 1291 Highway 201 and a portion of an abutting vacant parcel, PIDs 55448005 and 55517080 Greenwood from the rural mixed-use A2 zone to the rural industrial M3 zone as described in Appendix D of the report dated November 14, 2023. I so move.
Do we have a second for the motion? Councilor Allen, thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Debate? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And item D.
That municipal council give final consideration into, to, entering into, a development agreement to permit a comprehensive neighborhood development on a vacant parcel of land located on the west side of the Collins Road, PID 55037139 Port Williams, as described in Appendix C of the report dated October 12, 2023. I so move.
So the items are moved. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilor Davison. Discussion on the motion. Is there discussion on the motion from council?
You can put me in the queue, please.
Mayor Mertart, you can kick us off.
All right, I did want to share my opinion. There were some very good points raised this evening at the public hearing by the public. The, I've always been of the view, for example, that it's a great shame that sidewalks are not mandatory in subdivisions. It's obvious that families move into these subdivisions, and the existing subdivision has no sidewalks. It was that people who come out in the wintertime, or the kids that come out in the wintertime and the roads are plowed, must make their way down the main road in order to get to that bus stop, for example. So that's a problem that we have in many, many growth centers through the municipality, and we need the cooperation of the growth center itself when these things arise in order to see the subdivisions are in there. That, however, doesn't apply to the situation at hand other than that we could require, or the village could require, that there be sidewalks that sort of terminate, and the rest of the road is left with what they have. And that doesn't seem consistent, but I just want to put a bookmark in there that I think it's a great shame that sidewalks are not mandatory. It's a wrong-headed, and it shouldn't perpetuate, in my view. The stormwater issues that currently exist are somewhat like the sidewalk issue. It currently exists. Technically, the approval of this development that we're considering the application for right now is such that they deserve approval on this issue. They deserve approval, provided their stormwater management plan is such that it does not make the stormwater drainage situation worse than it currently is along the existing streets. They're not to be held accountable for that currently existing situation. Nevertheless, it should indeed be addressed, and if it can be addressed in the overall plan, the little expansion of the existing plan, that would be preferable, but it's not a reason to hold up this applicant's development. On the traffic side, that's a difficult one, and it comes up in every similar application. And the difficulty is, as with stormwater management, reputable experts in the field produce reports for the review of municipal engineers and then the reporting of the engineers to other folks in-house, and it ultimately comes to council. And we feel that we can rely on those. Indeed, we have nothing else to rely upon. The oral evidence of the fact that there will be increased traffic and increased risk is an argument that appears in every subdivision application. And I know it's a... is an argument that appears in every subdivision application, and I know it's kind of an ingrained concern for existing people. We have to, unless there can be something pointed out with respect to the existing reports that is incorrect, then I don't see council has any choice but what to accept the experts' reports in those areas. The alternate access to the site during construction, I think is an excellent idea, and I would certainly encourage the developer to jump on that and do what the applicant can in order to ensure that there's not increased water flow and increased mud and construction vehicles and upset applying to these folks. That said, it also has to be said that if subdivisions that go into a certain point in any road are always subject to extension, there's always adjacent property that's going to be developed, and there's always somebody farther up the road who's going to be building a house for so long as land is available for that purpose. So it would be a neighborly thing to do for the applicant to ensure that there was an alternative construction road. My heart goes out to the gentleman who is going to have a house immediately adjacent to the apartment building. We've had this difficulty in the past. I think some encouragement should be given to the applicant to, but not, I don't intend to hold up the applicant's application, but there should be some encouragement given to the applicant to introduce some kind of a buffer, and obviously, in their stormwater management plan, to ensure that there's no increased flow onto that individual's property. So long as the planners are still standing behind their recommendation, then I want to acknowledge the human element that I've heard about this evening, but nevertheless, I have faith in the fact that the applicant will ensure that he operates within bounds and giving consideration to the human element items he's heard this evening, and I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Mertart. Counselor Davison, you're next.
I won't be too long. I wrote down a whole bunch of notes while everybody was speaking, and I'm going to sort of write off the details of what the mayor had spoken about. The human aspect of it is huge, and that's probably one of the most important things that's going on right now. Something that stuck in my head was, you know, there's a lot of kids around. Certainly, I don't want to see kids get hit by cars. As most people know, I'm a paramedic for a long time. I, you know, work alongside of Bruce. I know he's a good guy, and he would do many things to make sure that this project would, will go safely. Couple of things that I had noted was that the temporary road. I think that's a heck of a good idea. I would not, if there was development near my area, I would not want all the heavy equipment to run up and down that street. It will likely damage that road. A temporary road into the site, I know it was a big concern for a lot of the public that was here. I think that's a good idea, and I would hope that the developer certainly takes that into consideration to have a separate... I know it's usually done after the job is done, but, you know, prior to would be certainly something that I would certainly support if they could do that. As far as the school bus thing that, at the end of the road, I'm not, I'm trying to think of where Collins Road is. I do know that bus safety, if they see an issue with ice and water, they will potentially move the bus stop down the street or up the street. I don't know if they can do that, but if there's complaints, they won't do it. Okay, there's just, I know that they've done it in other areas. My daughter's bus, they had to move because of an issue that there was with traffic. You know, certainly, if we could, bring them involved as well, and just to see if there was something they could do on their end. There's a few other things here. I certainly feel for the water that's running down through there. That's a major issue in several areas. You know, extra catch basins, it was encouraging to hear that somebody was there from the county to try to alleviate the water issue. You know, French drains is a big thing now. A lot of people are getting, you know, French drains to run water, and hopefully, you know, with the development, that that can be something that is also looked at, to make sure that, you know, this water is moving in the right direction and not down through people's yards and ruining their infrastructure and their houses and their land. So there's just a few things. Something I certainly, you know, will go for this motion as I seconded it. And with this final consideration, maybe there'll be a little bit more discussion between the two parts, too, to make sure that this development is safe and something good for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further comments from council this evening? Counselor Killen?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I certainly understand and have empathy for the concerns that were brought up tonight, and I kind of feel, and I do feel, that the applicant and developer heard loud and clear these issues, and I have to, I guess, place my faith that these items will be addressed and hopefully successfully. But I certainly don't want to hold this project up, as we really need more housing in the area, and I believe that this will work out. It's too bad, on the other hand, that we couldn't have representatives of the... I know we've gone through these meetings with the village, and probably the province has been involved in a quieter way on this, but it'd be nice to have everybody in the House to hear and maybe address, help address the issues that have been brought forward tonight. I will be supporting this project. I do have faith in the developer and the applicants, so that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Turn my own light off instead of yours. Counselor Davison for the second time.
I did forget one, just because I know that one person was still here that had a question, and we didn't really answer it all. I would like to actually send this over to Counselor Burgess. Something to bring up maybe at a fire meeting is if this is a four-story building, maybe a little more discussion on how the fire department in that area is going to address the system when it comes to a building that size. Once you get to a certain height, it's, you know, you have to have ladder trucks and things like that. So maybe something we could certainly, to make the person that had been up here to discuss the emergency services and things, certainly something to bring up at the Fire Association, just to see if there's going to be a plan in place for a mutual aid system or a mutual aid protocol as the development is sort of ongoing, even with the build of it.
Thanks, Counselor. And actually, we were talking about this briefly, about how sometimes when we have these presentations, some details can get lost because it's a lot of information. So I would ask that the Director of Planning and Inspection Services, Trish Javrick, just chime in on how we consider existing infrastructure and service provision, particularly because, of course, when we get tax revenue, it's not simply just to pay for a new road that goes in, but it is that difference in that new revenue created is, we're not out here trying to make a profit. We're putting that tax revenue back into community to provide service at good levels. So if you could speak to that a bit, Trish, I would appreciate that.
Certainly, through you, Deputy. As part of the planning review, Ms. Mojer would have reached out to Terry Brown, our manager of enforcement, and part of his duties would be to reach out to the fire chief. And whenever we have structured fires within our jurisdiction, we have something called mutual aid, as well as automatic response. So structured fires will automatically get responses sent out from neighboring departments if their department doesn't have a ladder, for example. But that automatic response does occur on those structured fires. I believe that was the heart of your question.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Trish. Anything further from counselors around the table?
Okay, if I might weigh in, if council would permit, as the Chair. I wanted to comment and just, I was remiss in not doing this earlier and just thanking everyone who was here, and I should have done this while the room was full of people. But it takes a lot of time and effort and planning and research and effort, I think I said that, but to be as invested in your community as to come out to a meeting, to speak at a podium, to address in an unfamiliar situation, to make a positive change in your community. And several folks apologized tonight for not feeling prepared, but this is not a job in which you need to be prepared for. You just need to speak for your community and from your own perspective, and that is why we have public hearings, so it's very important. I'm also feeling slightly unprepared, because when, we are in a situation in which we hear, we have access to the documents, and we read, and we prepare our, you know, our thoughts and our feelings, and we read the policies, and we come, and then we hear from the public for a lengthy period of time, and then we're expected to make a decision directly after, and that can be very difficult, because we may not have also had the time to process all the things we've heard and to fully, I guess, absorb the information that was given to us tonight. So I just want to say thank you so much. And we are also in a difficult position. We face a ton of pressures, I think, as a council currently in particular, when it comes to the state of housing in our community, in which we have, you know, quite a lot of influence over. So we are, we face, as a council, pressures, and we are often in these situations where it comes to growth, and growth often doesn't come without growing pains. And that can be difficult to parse through and to make decisions over. One other issue I have sort of, is that we often inherit situations that we were not around this council table, when developments in the past were approved, or the way they were developed, or the policies that were used to direct those developments, whether it be through installation of drainage systems. A lot of that stuff goes far beyond our times, and so we're asked to consider current situations based on, you know, past circumstances that we're also trying to sort of parse through as we look at the current proposal in front of us. And so my thoughts on the motion are that I would have a very difficult time supporting it if I wasn't very certain that there was going to be some type of temporary road that would service the back end of the construction, to be able to divert construction trucks off the steeple drive, because I think it's doable, and we heard from the applicant tonight that he would, but I don't feel, I feel that is little comfort without certainty. And so I am struggling currently with the decision to vote in favor of it without some absolute certainty, that the very least we can do for these residents is create a temporary pathway for construction vehicles to access the place where the development is going to take place or would take place, should it be approved. That's my biggest concern at this point. I also worry about the trail. I think we talk a lot at this table, we talk a lot as a council about complete communities. We talk about what it looks like to live in a neighborhood where you can walk around safely, or you can get to the store safely, where you can visit your neighbor safely. I forfeited the right to walk to my neighbor's house by living rurally on a road that people regularly travel hundreds of kilometers an hour in front of. But I do feel like one of the benefits of living in a denser area is that you do have access to those services, and you do have sidewalks and accessible trails built to a certain standard to access if you're part of that community. So I do think that that active transportation piece is extremely important, but I know we have an active transportation plan. I know we're always reviewing our policies around sidewalks. I know sidewalks can be added later, which gives me some comfort, but I also know sidewalks are in the village's domain, and I don't have any villages in my district. I don't have a great deal of experience in dealing with villages in the same way some of my council colleagues do. But I do feel if, that there's money available through federal programs for active transportation infrastructure that the village can avail themselves of to put, to address this issue, which I think is extremely serious. So, and I might stop there. I had similar concerns that one other member of the public had around the fires in Tantalan, and thinking about those extra routes away, out of community, and sort of the stresses around dead-end roads. So I had some concerns about that, and I'm struggling, and I'll be honest with folks tonight, I'm struggling with the fact I don't have concrete answers to these issues after hearing the concerns of the community. That being said, I also know that to put a delay in this process, and this is something I struggle with every time we approve a major development that faces community opposition, is to delay really kicks the process back an incredible amount of time and creates other hurdles and logistics that make it really hard to move forward. So I'm now in sort of this philosophical position where I have to sort of trust the good intentions that these major concerns I have will be addressed. So as you can tell, I'm probably not super certain how I'm going to vote based on my comments tonight. I am hopeful that if other counselors do feel strongly about this issue, that we're here tonight to debate it and to talk about it, and I'd appreciate hearing further from my council colleagues about where you may be at and why you may be making your decisions
Counselor Harding, thank you for stepping up to the challenge.
Yeah, I, just everything you said, I feel the same way. It's a hard decision. I realize that growth has to happen. I see the, in my line of work with Public Works, I see the developers and the new stuff that comes from them, and they do do a wonderful job now, and I'm quite sure that they will look after the water problems and stuff like that. But it's still, is it 100% sure that's going to happen? I don't, you know, I hope it will, but I'm not sure. So I'm struggling as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Davison for the third time?
Sorry, this is my last time, I promise. I was struggling, too. I did listen to everybody's concern, and the reason why I'm going to be okay with voting for this is because the gentleman that stood up here with Dr. McLeod, he did say that they were going to, if it was something that people were concerned about with the road, with steeple view, I believe it is, that they would consider putting a secondary road in for that development. And because he said that, I feel better about voting for this. And I feel the same way. I was kind of like, geez, I don't, I didn't really know, really had to, which way to go with this, but when I became a counselor not that long ago, one of the biggest things that was always on my mind, working at a shelter, was housing. We have a crisis, and we need development. And it's, every time there's going to be a place that people are going to build, this is, there's going to be opposition, and I understand that, because there's probably the same will be happening up where I am. So I think I've changed my mind more on the fact that if they can get these trucks off these roads and make sure that the kids are safe, and to get into a secondary road to get into that, you know, away from these families, then I would, I'm certainly going to vote in favor.
Thank you, Counselor. I have no further lights at this time. Is there anyone else who wishes to weigh in prior to the question being called? Counselor Armstrong?
Yeah, I probably should. I wasn't going to push my button. I'm not as on the fence as a lot of the other counselors here. I sit as the Chair of PAC, so I know the process and what we're required to look at when we bring these motions before us. But what I did want to say is that I did hear everything you said, as far as the road safety and the drainage, and the ice, and the speeds, and all of this other stuff. And I would, the drainage, I think that Mr. Varek said that there was something that we were going to try and do. But as far as the speeds, and the bus stop, and sidewalks, and things like that, they're beyond the purview of this council. beyond the purview of this council. And I hope that at some point you will take the passion that you brought here and gave us tonight on this subject and take it to the village and ask them for a sidewalk and take it to the province and tell them that your roads aren't safe, that you need the speed limits decreased. We've done it in Kingston. We've had the speed limits decreased through residential areas. And if you need our help to go to those MLAs or whoever it is you want to talk to, then we'll come and help. So that's, I guess, all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Burgess?
I guess I'll weigh in since, just quick, you know, we live in a rural municipality where primarily, historically, we've been rural. We haven't had dense populations, and, you know, over the last few years, we've seen an influx of people move from away. They've come and chosen our area, and we're very thankful for that, and we welcome them with open arms. But as growth happens, change also has to happen. So these systems and necessary things aren't in place or thought of necessarily because we don't, we didn't anticipate growth at the rate which it happened. And with this growth, also exacerbates other issues, and we have a huge crisis in terms of housing right now. So although I hear all of the comments, and I do understand, I'm a mom, I understand the fear in regards to children, but very much to what councillor Armstrong said this evening, unfortunately, those things are just without our grasp. But it does not mean that we will not be there to advocate and stand beside the people who bring their passion to us to ensure the safety and the well-being of their investments. However, I'm not on the fence about this because I do believe that this process has taken quite a lengthy time, and we need housing yesterday. So I will be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Burgess. Anything further to come before the meeting, or before this motion? Apologies. Any debate? Any further comment? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor or otherwise of this motion, please indicate in the usual fashion. Mayor Matard is registered as an aye. The motion carries with one negative vote. Thank you, council. And at this point, I'd ask councillor Armstrong to tell us about the next public hearing date.
Oh, shoot, you took your piece of paper.
I took my piece of paper. The next public hearing date will be Tuesday, February 6, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in this Next up, we have other businesses. Are there any other business to come before the meeting? We have, if you want to stay, we have a section for public comment. Just want you to know. Any other business to come before the meeting? Councillor here, my son. At this point, the mic is open for comments from the public, and if you wish to address council at this time, you're welcome to. You'll have to raise the tiny podium.
We good?
Yes.
Alex Mador, thank you for taking the time listening to us today. I just want to raise one point that was brought up about the housing crisis. There's no doubt in Canada locally, there is a housing crisis. I think if, I'm not going to say information was omitted, but Google the Collins. It's the apartment building that this gentleman is going to build. It starts at $400,000 for a one-bedroom apartment. Is that a solution to the housing crisis?
No.
I just, we can't have comments from the gallery, sorry. It's just a procedural thing, but appreciate the passion, just can't have it.
So I totally get it, but this development is not addressing the housing crisis whatsoever. It's not targeted towards people that can, that are struggling with it. The people on Steeple View, we're privileged. We know that for various reasons, you know, some of us, but the people who are in crisis that are struggling are not going to be living here. And to base your vote on that, I think you may have not done the full research, and maybe the gentleman who was here indicating, you know, his passion about this, that's great, but maybe he omitted some of that information as well. And, I mean, it's not that hard to find, but I'd love for anyone to take a look at what the real estate prices would be on that house or on any of the developments and try to justify to themselves that you're helping the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the floor?
I was, I'll lift up to the mic.
And just state your name and say that.
Yeah, I actually used to live on 77 Steeple View. I think I stated that earlier. Thankfully, I moved down the hill.
Yeah, you gotta lift it up a little bit.
I'm now at 29 Steeple View, and my name's Dennis McPherson. How do I move this up? What do I do?
There's a little, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
It's just also for the record and people listening and...
Absolutely. So I just, I was at least hoping that enough reasonable doubt in poking holes in the requirements that some of us felt aren't met and the issues and challenges that are currently existing would have been enough to at least send proposal back. We're not against development. We're just against how this thing is laid out and the current issues that we're currently dealing with. And Deputy Mayor Emily Lutz, I applaud you for your vote, and I think you made a great point, which I'm also very disappointed in, and the rest of the council members, in that I heard nothing, but hopefully the drainage issues are addressed. I encourage the applicant to put in a buffer. I place faith in items will be addressed. Maybe discussion with the fire department would be good. And like, those are uncertainties. So you're turning us over now, approve the plan, and there's a whole bunch of things that you guys brought up: drainage issues, sidewalk issues, safety issues, buffers needed. What does it take to get a rejected proposal? Like, really disappointed, really disappointed. You guys flagged enough things that I would think would at least drive a review of this proposal and come back with something that's more suitable, something that's more suitable. A bunch of uncertainties, I've got no faith any of this is going to happen. I'm really glad that you guys do, but you're using words like, hopefully, I encourage, I place faith in maybe discussion, and that's what you left it at. Very disappointed.
Would anyone else like to address council at this time?
Again, Murray Smith, 42 Steeple View. Similar along the lines of having faith, in my time being involved with Steeple View Drive, I've been heard from multiple sources that the developer of our road, our street was supposed to, going to, was in the process of taking care of the drainage, and it got approved. Now we hear the same thing tonight. Going to maybe do it. Going to look into it and get approval. A lot of the water that comes out in Steeple View isn't just runoff water over the top. It comes out of the ground. I was dealing with my yard with water coming over the top, and as soon as I dug into the ground, it felt like Jed Clampett. Water coming up out of the ground. There's a reason that the village has springs up there, because that hill is full of water. And I think when the developer, I was speaking to him, I met him before, the developer and his engineer, I said, I think you guys are going to be in for a whack of trouble when you cut into that hill, because you're going to be surprised at how much water rushes up out of the ground, like did at my house. I put in a $52,000 wall and French drain to mitigate my yard. And when we cut the ground, the water was coming out of the play everywhere. And I think you need more than just goodwill and promises from this developer with regard to that. With regard to the traffic situation, I have extensive experience dealing with traffic, say 34 years of enforcing the law. When I was in Alberta, I wrote bylaws for the county with road use agreements and that sort of thing. They were, you know, I wrote them, and then they were reviewed by lawyers and adjusted and passed, but by and large, they were. And whoever did your traffic survey, I think you should get a second opinion, because those blind crests that I spoke of, they're right where that bus stops. Pop over the hill and you're right into the back end of the bus. And you're going to increase the traffic coming down that road by, I don't know what the figures were, the percentages I heard here tonight, but it's basically we're doubling the size of the village on our street. And you've got a stop sign with a water problem. Hopefully, that gets addressed. I know that one catch basin at the bottom of the hill is not going to fix everything on Steeple View. There'll probably have to be more. But you've got that stop sign, the blind crest, you've got the next stop sign where you have to look back over your shoulder to clear the road, and then you get out to 358. And it lines up now, and people are making bad decisions now. I sit there 10 cars back, and I watch, and I go, ooh, Jesus, that was close. I'd like to go set a camera up there someday at rush hour and just take something for you guys watching the people trying to get out. It's not just Steeple View that's developing, too. Stars Point Road, there are all kinds of development going on out there. Properties can be divided, subdivided over and over again out there. It's all adding to that one-stop sign at 358 and Stars Point Road. And I think you folks are in for a world of trouble once this gets built because there's going to be crashes galore. People making, getting frustrated and making bad decisions, and I've seen it and seen it and seen it. I used to go to one particular intersection out in Alberta, and I'd get down on the road and look at it, and look at it the other way. Yeah, straight and level, just like I left it last time at the last fatal I was at. People making bad decisions. Won't be at the same level as what I just spoke of, but I think there's going to be issues. I think you should get a second opinion on your traffic survey. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glenn Dyke, 68 Steeple View Drive. I mean, you clearly eloquently articulated what you can't do. I'm new to the neighborhood, so I don't quite understand the multi-jurisdictional bureaucracy I find myself in. But I'm hoping somebody in the room, including clerical technical, and I mean no disrespect, I don't understand how I should appropriately address you. Does somebody in this room have the ability to suggest, recommend, or demand a traffic light at the intersection of Collins and Steeple View? I think that would be an enormous leap forward into the 21st century if Port Williams had a traffic light. I think people would come from miles around just to marvel at it. I know I'm being facetious, but it seems to me to be an immediate remedy to an immediate safety issue. And at the corner of, which hasn't been named from the apartment building down to Steeple View, a three-way stop. Those two little expenses, and with the speed camera, you'll cover the costs of both of it in a couple of hours with speeding tickets, would make a tremendous move forward in ensuring some safety in that area. Thank you.
Thanks. I believe it's a provincial matter, but we are always advocating for various improvements on provincial roads, so...
Is there one more comment?
Yeah, one more.
Why not? We've come this far, right?
Dennis McPherson, 29 Steeple View. I think it was Lexi Burgess, I think, was the one who had mentioned councils here for you. If you need us, or if there's something not going right or there's challenges, I'll just leave it at, I'm now five months and three days into waiting for a response to the only issue to the county that I've raised on this street. Also included Granger on that communication, so I would like to wait for my follow-up on those concerns that I made. So I'm glad to hear council is here for us when we need them.
Thank you. Okay. At this point in time, I believe we will move to adjourn, as we will not have a closed session. Moved by councillor Burgess, seconded by councillor Armstrong. All in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Thank you, Mayor Matard. Hope you're feeling well.